Welcome to the July 31 work session for the Polk County School Board. I understand that Mr. Townsend is running just a few minutes late, he'll be here in just a minute. So at this time, Madam Superintendent, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, and we're going to go ahead and get started with our first item that we have. We have our school board policy updates, I believe Wendy, is Wendy in here? There she is.
Starting out with the exciting stuff, I appreciate that.
Oh, the exciting person.
So there are two sets of recommendations before you today. The first is the staff recommendation on our control of an enrollment policy, and it just modifies the deadlines for appeals. And then the second set of policies are updates recommended by Niola. Most of them are safety policies, where we're modifying the language to align with the requirements of SB 7026. And then there are just a couple of non-safety related policies that we're just ready to go. So we're kind of...
Are there any questions?
You're welcome. The next one is just, I wanted to bring this to the board. This is about the Lake Wales charter proposal. I believe you all received that information from the Lake Wales Charter Group. And recently, there was another one, I believe Ms. Clayton is going to pass that out, that was shared with us by, I believe her parents sent that to us, another letter. I wanted to be very clear on what we received, and I have met with Mr. Nelson and Mr. Gibson regarding Lake Wales and McLaughlin. The first thing I want to be clear of is that there was some miscommunication that's in this letter and the current one that you're receiving, is that McLaughlin is to be turned over to an external operator. McLaughlin is not to be turned over to an external operator this year. They have another year to improve their grade to a C. But in the letter, it gives the impression that the board has to make a decision at this point, which there is no decision being made because they're still up under a two-year plan previously. I also want to note that, you know, we got teachers again that are at, they're unrest right now. They're getting a little nervous, they've heard this as being said that we're turning them over. And I think we need to be very clear that we're not, we believe in the work that they're doing, that we're supporting the work that our teachers are doing out there, McLaughlin. And I just want to say that McLaughlin was three points away from a C. Several times last year, we had to go out and clear up some communication about they're going to be turned over to an external, and we had teachers, again, they were worried quite naturally, they were worried about their jobs, they were worried about where they're going to land and what's going to happen. And so we did that several times, and already at the beginning of this year, that conversation is already beginning to enter back into their minds of what's going to happen to us here at the schools, we're about to enter the school year. So McLaughlin was three points away from a C. They have another year to improve their grade. But what I wanted to highlight this year is that even with all the, you know, miscommunication that came about, is that McLaughlin improved in six of the nine areas. They only declined in three, and that decline was from anywhere from three percentage points to six. The increases they had in the six, in five of the nine areas was an increase anywhere from three percentage points to 21 percentage points, and one area stayed the same. So they're on track for improvement with three points away from the letter grade of a C. And I think as a district and a board, we need to let them know that we support the work they're doing out there. I will be going out to meet with the teachers because I know they're already uneasy about what's going to happen to McLaughlin. And, you know, I just want to be clear that we're not turning them over to an external. They will have support in there, which they are very well aware of it, because we're going to do what we've done with all of our schools. We're going to support them until we get them off the list and support them beyond that to make sure that they're sustainable and that they're off of the list. So I have all hopes in that they're going to make it off this year, but I just wanted to bring that as, the proposal you see, they're asking that the board come to the recommendation. My recommendation to the board is that we do not accept this proposal, that we move forward with the work that we're doing in McLaughlin with the teachers and support the faculty and the staff out there. So I just wanted to bring that, Mr. Chair.
So I have some questions and some comments. I'm assuming that that, well, let me offer this first. From my perspective, it's never been an issue of performance. I mean, I think it's clear that you have demonstrated your ability as our superintendent and your staff to turn around the at-risk schools. That's unequivocally clear. I think this is much deeper, much deeper than just an issue of turning around a school. I think it's a much deeper issue for that community. And I, so I guess my question would be, and I don't know if you would like us to ask the question of the folks because I see they're here, if you'd like to answer this question. I mean, for example, what if we are able to turn around? I'm assuming that's not going to change their perspective. I think that this is an important issue for them. Again, as I said at the front, it's much deeper than just the grade of the school. I think most importantly, if they were failing, and if we were going to turn them over to an operator, certainly, we would want to turn them over to the Lake Wales Charter School District first before turning them over to an operator. But even absent that, I think it's clear that they, that their organization feels like they're, that that's a part of their community, and they would like to have greater control over that. So I'm not sure that that would change their mind, and I'd like to ask that question, if you're okay with that. Okay. Mr. Gibson, would you like to address that question?
The question is, what would our position be regardless of performance?
Yes, sir.
Our position would be that it just makes common sense. And I could mention a few numbers first, and then talk about the community part of it. I think everybody's aware of the fact that there's a 400 to 500 student waiting list for BAC and BAC Academy. And that is the reason that the need arose, because it just happened year after year, for BAC North. We're now back to the situation where people are leaving the community to go out of town to other schools. And that's what distressed us 14 years ago. So BAC North is the only thing that's on the agenda for this evening, not this. And we had a very cordial conversation with the superintendent. The superintendent told us at the time, and it's always been cordial, that the decision point on which way to go, because there's a plan that has to be in place, the decision point on that is going to be in October or November. So we're not at a decision point at this time. But in terms of our community and a K through 12 program that would be, would strengthen our kids, to have a unified system is the thing that makes sense. Right now, we're very disjointed. And we feel, we feel like this is a wonderful opportunity. Locally, it's called the no-brain. We feel like this is a wonderful opportunity because we have so much support in the community. And then if there is a conversion to a charter school, we also have the benefit of startup funds. And we're able to bring $1.8 million to McLaughlin. And in the process, if the school, if the super, or the district goes to the external operator, save the school board $862,000. Now, that is an opportunity to help kids unify our community. And I think probably the last thing I would say to you is, we are completely committed to public schools. Why else would we do what we have done? There are many more than 400 charter schools in Florida. The charter schools get painted with the same brush. Any guess as to how many conversion schools there are? How many people want to take on the entire attendance zone? All kids? 25. Five of them in little old Lake Wales. We are committed to all kids. The proposal is to take every Lake Wales. And BAC North gives us the opportunity to do that. We'll see what the upcoming year holds. But there is a terrific public investment on the campus of McLaughlin that ought to be utilized for the benefit of public schools. And folks, all our system does, and this may be the biggest problem that we all as a district have, all our system does is just take local folks and put them in a position where you are with the schools. Our finances are wonderful. There are, our board is close to our community, our community is close to the schools. And I think it's obvious that we have succeeded in bringing more community support to public schools than anywhere I can think of. That's outside this district. Not a slam on the district. Our folks are committed to public schools. And this would be an opportunity for us all to enhance public schools in our little community that we're completely invested in. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Well, Gibson.
And we had a very good meeting.
Right.
We did. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands the plan that he's talking about, October, November. As the state always gives us, which we had to do last year for the six schools, they'll tell us that timeline when we have to make a plan for if the schools don't make it academically out. And that's when we bring that proposal for, to you, when we are given the three options and we select the option at that point. That is what Mr. Gibson was talking about when he said October, November. So I just want to make sure everyone is clear about what that is. It's only a contingency plan for if they don't make it, then what do you do next?
Nonetheless, that's a decision point for this board.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, and thank you, Madam Chair, excuse me, Madam Superintendent, for the opportunity to ask that question. So one of the questions I would have is this. Let's assume that when we form that plan, which we're going to, which is coming, that, for example, if this McLaughlin is not able to make the C grade, would we then, our contingency plan would be that we would turn them over to the charter school? Is that what?
You have to select the option.
Okay.
One of the options will be brought forward.
One of those, okay, very good. But my guess, my question would be, if the Lake Wales community is okay with waiting for that, because that could be a year away.
Yes. I think, I don't think there's any other choice. Because, I mean, you know, we're not far away from opening school. So it's just impractical. And we knew, the statute does say, three grades of less than a C must make a choice. Then there's another provision in there that says, well, you can have a next, another year if you want.
Okay.
So we're relying on the first statement. The reality is, it's going to be another year, and that's the only thing that makes sense. And the only thing that makes sense is to do some intelligent planning. And part of that intelligent planning is, which fork in the road is going to be taken in October or November?
Okay, thank you. So you've had the conversation, and we're on the same page, it sounds like.
I am.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes, ma'am.
I have comments. I think that we're at a place where we need to include the McLaughlin families, the teachers, and they should have some input on the direction of McLaughlin. We've talked about this before, and I think that we need to call for a vote to see exactly what McLaughlin's staff and families think about the idea of either continuing as they are or whether or not they want to join with the Lake Wales Charter Schools. In addition to that, I think we also need to look at Spook Hill Elementary. You can't leave Spook Hill Elementary out. Because if you do, that would be the only school in that community that would still be on the umbrella of our public schools. In addition to that, I think that we need to also, if we're going to look at the option of either doing a provider or the Lake Wales Charter Schools taking over McLaughlin and Spook Hill, because I think, again, if you take one, you take the other, then, again, that community, Spook Hill and Lake, and McLaughlin need to have input on what they envision and what they see. Because as Ms. Jackie said a few minutes ago, they've been working extremely hard. They need to have input, no matter what it is. And whatever the results are, then we as a board need to embrace that and go on and do ultimately, as Mr. Gibson just said, what is best for our students.
Yes, ma'am. Point well taken.
And I agree. Because we hear from the community leaders, but I want to hear from all of the community of Lake Wales. Another issue is, I'm still concerned because I see a lot of the neediest children being shipped out of the county, out of the district. And I want to be reassured that Lake Wales will make every effort to keep all their children within the district. And because they're a charter, because we have class size, what happens to these children? And that's why I hate to have limits on the number of, you know, we give you a set number of kids you can have in your schools. In October or November, when a child moves in and your school is full, or you consider it full, are you accepting them like regular public schools do? We accept every kid, but we just know with Given Street, we found 14 kids. Now, Lake Wales took them back, but they all couldn't go to their zone school because they said, "We didn't have room," and this is not even the beginning of the year. I think there's some real conversations the district and Lake Wales needs to have about if they're going to be a total charter school district, the town of Lake Wales. We need to figure out how they act more like a regular public school and not a charter. Because most charters, once they get their kids, then they don't take any more kids during the rest of the year. People move in and they go to their zone schools. Well, in Lake Wales, people move in and their zone schools might tell them, "We're full, you have to be bussed out of town until next year." And those are the kinds of issues, especially for the neediest and the poorest kids. Because when those children are bussed out of town, their families can't get to the schools. There's a real disconnect between those families. Because they can't afford to get to the school, because it may be 10 or 15 miles away. And somebody needs to speak up for those children. And I think it can be worked out, but right now, I know there's set numbers. And I know at the end of the year, Given Street had 14. Now, it was one of our lowest performing schools. So I don't think people said, made that conscious choice. Somehow, they didn't fill out the application, maybe they didn't know, and that's another issue. Do all the people understand? Do, is there real effort for all families to fill out those applications? Because a lot of people don't have internet access, a lot of people, their lives are such that they don't stay up with deadlines, and then their children have to go out of town. Does that make sense? Because they're the children that get left out if we have no public school options in Lake Wales. Because I think we'd already decided that Spook Hill was going to take any children from Lake Wales that somehow didn't make it into the charter system, rather than busing them out. Somebody needs to speak up for those kids. And I see, sometimes our own district doesn't treat some of these kids as fairly as we should. And we need to start doing that. Public school is their only hope. Middle-class kids, their parents have lots of options. They're not happy with what we're doing, they have other options. But the neediest and the poorest only have us as an option. And so that's what I want reassurance from. And I know we can work it out, and I know the contracts could, I know the state has a contract, but I know that we could work it out.
The question was, does it make any sense? Let me tell you what makes no sense. For years, we have, I mean, we started out, all kids, all schools. Poured our hearts out, that's what we wanted. And we have stumbled through the last 12, 14 years, districts saying, "You're skimming off the top." And we're saying, "We want all kids." And nobody, and it's just this, it's maddening. You're absolutely right that it should be worked out. And I'm going to tell you, we want all kids. And we have a situation where, and I don't want to start any arguments, I'll mention, you've already said that the rumor is, or something, that we don't accept kids, we're a charter school, we send them off, we're full, whatever the excuse is. It's reality that the district has taken kids from McLaughlin and assigned them to different high schools so they won't go to Lake Wales High School and send the buses to take them out of town. Now, that's infuriating. And so there's got to be a lot better understanding. If indeed, one of the things that gets me is every school meeting I've ever been in, here and there, at the end of the meeting, you have, remember, it's all about the kids. It's all about the kids. The problem's the adults.
I will agree with that.
No problem with the kids. And so it is, especially with the space, with BAC North, now that we have the seats, we can, all of this can be worked out.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
I'm, I apologize.
You're quite all right. And we, I think we need to continue the discussion, and we need to do so with the full board as well, so.
I just wanted to go on the record, I will not vote for giving McLaughlin to Lake Wales Charter School at any point until there is a three-year period that I do not have a single parent call me and say, "I live across the street from Lake Wales and I can't get my kid into Lake Wales High School." Because I've had two in the past 48 hours. We just saw that there's 120 students on your waitlist. Several of the students at the school live in Winter Haven, or Bartow, or Eagle Lake. So until every student in your school is from Lake, but there's not a question, I don't want a response. Until every student in your school is from Lake Wales area and there are no kids from Lake Wales on your waiting list, I will not consider giving any other school to Lake Wales Charter Schools.
Now, we have our next item, and...
No, I'm sorry, we're not entertaining public comments. There were some questions for Mr. Gibson, and he was kind enough to answer those for us. Thank you.
Okay, board members, items three, four, and five, we're going to flip a little bit because after speaking with staff, Mike, the superintendent's budget would like to come after the five-year capital plan and the organizational charge. So next we'll have a five-year capital plan, and then followed by the organizational charge from our HR department.
For our audience, there will be an opportunity after the board meeting this evening, if you'd like to speak to any item, including this item, you're most welcome to do so at that time.
I'm sorry. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
No, just a little bit, what it is. We're here today to give you a draft of the five-year capital plan and to give you an overview also of the 15-year sales tax. With me, I have Ms. Pam Lewis, who's our senior coordinator in planning and real estate. And I have Mr. Richard Altman, who is the director. They both were instrumental in putting the information together. The PowerPoint was emailed to you, I believe you all have a copy of it. And the CIP along with the sales tax revenues. Can I put them on, right? But I don't know where they are.
Did you put it on the desktop, or did you email it to yourself?
No, I emailed it for the board item. Okay. Can you help me with that, please?
Was it the, on the website?
Okay. While we find that, I'll start. What I'm hoping to accomplish today is to go over the goals and vision for the capital improvement program, talk about the anticipated revenues and the importance of having the sales tax revenue for our program, and go over a five-year capital plan specifically, and the draft of the 15-year sales tax. This year, we're doing it differently, and why do we need a capital plan? We want to have a specific five-year capital plan unlike having just the budget and the work plan. We want to provide guidance and structure to make sure that we're accomplishing the overall goal, which is students first. We want to have continuity and predictability, especially for the public. They will know which other projects will be coming forward because they'll have the five-year plan, and then they can look at the long-range plan. And we want accountability and transparency, especially now when we're asking the voters to continue to have some sales tax. So we want to be as transparent as possible. In developing this plan, we looked at the five and 10-year enrollment. With the enrollment, we did projections this year so we can identify where we need capacity needs. As you know, it's the northeast area that's really growing. So as a result, we have the majority of our schools in that area. We evaluated all our old schools based on three major criteria that I will go over, and we ranked them. We developed visions and goals for the capital plan, and we reorganized the CIP document so it is much more user-friendly, and the public can follow it. You know, in 2013, we adopted school concurrency, and we established a level of service of 100% of FISH capacity, which is design capacity. Per unit of local agreement with those 15 cities and the county, we're supposed to add enough capacity in our plan to keep growth, to keep pace with growth, to maintain that level of service of 100%. So the first goal is to make sure that we accomplish that and that we have the capacity projects. The second goal is to modernize schools on a systematic schedule. And a result of that, we took into account age, the condition, and the educational adequacy, and we ran those, not just for the five years, but we ran all our schools. Usually, schools are modernized with... Usually, schools are modernized between thirty and forty-five years. We have quite a number of schools that are over fifty years, and so we have to, we rank them for modernization. We want the continued maintenance is so important to a building, to make sure we have the HVAC system working. We have a good roof. We have a non-compromise building envelope. So maintenance is continuous. With technology, we have to upgrade technology in order to, to prepare for future ready schools. Okay?
Just a second while he gets that.
Thank you so much. And then the big thing we have, we're focusing is on security projects. A big portion of our budget is for security projects, and we know that is at the forefront right now. And also, as part of the CIP, we do have to include transportation. So we have, because we're using the LCI. So in order to create a comprehensive CIP, we have the transportation. Okay, where are we?
Right here.
Okay. In regards to the revenues, we have impact fees. Impact fees is funded by the county at fifty percent. So, and this is for the five-year period, not the fifteen-year sales tax. So we're projecting a hundred million dollars from impact fees, from sales tax that we know it will pass, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven million, from the local capital improvement, which is our mileage, three-hundred-and-twenty-six million from miscellaneous eighteen. And that's how we kind of broke it down. The percentage, really, it wasn't that specific. It was based on need, where, where we came up with the percentage and having a balanced plan. Now, our revenues, I did talk a bit about that. On the first half, we have our local source, which is our LCI, our property tax levy. We have our impact fees funded at fifty percent, again, not the full. Instead of ten thousand a unit, it's like about five thousand a unit. We have the pulled promise half-sent sales tax, and then we have the carryfor order from LCI. At the state level, we still get a little bit from the fuel tax allocation. We get debt service, and with this one, we mostly do new roofs. I'm glad to see that we have peak on new construction this year, and we have peak on minor projects also. So that's our revenue. So our total revenue for capital is a hundred and twenty-eight million, eight-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven. So, and that revenue is comprehensive.
Excuse me, Mrs. Usher. If we got the extra five, what is it, five kens of a mil for the LCI?
Uh-huh.
What would that mean in terms of dollars? Do you know?
We did that calculation with Mr. Perron's office, and what it came up to. Do you remember?
Fifteen.
Fifteen million per year?
Yeah, a mil generates just a little over thirty million.
Okay. Thank you.
New schools. As I mentioned, our new schools are primarily in the northeast. We have four new schools in the northeast area. We have what we refer to as eighteen A A A, which is a new high school, and we want to start that right away. We do have a, we did some projections, and we have enough students today for two high schools, of eighteen hundred high schools. So if we, with growth, we would have to bring those schools up to like three thousand. So we really do need a new high school right now.
I think what I heard you say is you need two. And then one.
I would think so, but I'm being, I know with the, with the money, and I'm trying to see if we can pay for it with impact fees, so.
Is there any other place around the county that has a desperate need for high schools?
For high school, no. Because in this area, Haynes is also over. So this new high school will have to provide enrollment relief for Haynes also.
And the green ones are elementary schools?
The green ones are elementary. You know the Davenport, the old Davenport School of the Arts? We want to bring that back to a full elementary school. And we have had meetings with the mayor and the city manager there. I'm supposed to present to the board on August twentieth, asking them to vacate the roadway for us and assist us in converting that cactus treatment plant to sanitary sewer connection. So I'll be at the City Commission on August twentieth, if the board directs me to go ahead with the, with bringing old Davenport back to the elementary school. We also have two new schools. We, we right away need another elementary school, and we have a store just north of five-four, and then we have another one out further in the plan in twenty-six. So we have four new schools up in the northeast. There are like forty-seven thousand acres of land to be developed in the northeast. If, when fully developed, and that will be probably around twenty, fifty-five or so, the population of the northeast will be like the entire county's population.
I'm having some trouble with the connection. Please try again in a moment.
Is that my phone?
Mrs. Fields, Mrs. Bird?
Whoa. My bad.
You're talking about the needs of these new schools.
Never had that happen.
And the impact fees. Impact fees don't come all at one given time, right?
That's correct.
So how do you envision us being able to meet these needs?
Okay, we're looking, we're looking.
And I'm sure maybe it's put her into your presentation as far as the timeline.
Okay, I will need Mike's office help. But what we're looking at with the new high school, we do have some impact fees right now. So we probably have like maybe fifteen million. The, the school is not built right away. It takes like three years. So how much we have for the high school, Richard? Sixty-five? So with sixty-five million, I could get that in about four years. So when, so I have the design next year, then I have the, the capacity. So I have like two million in, I don't have the budget, and then the rest of the money. So I won't have all the impact fees up. I've been talking with Mr. Dierdorf to see if I could bond or if the, of the county can front us to fifteen million, or I'll have to see if we can use fifteen million as sales tax and reimburse sales tax the following year.
Or another option would be to bond what you need from the sales tax until the impact fees come in. Could we do it that way?
And yes, certainly, that's something. And I did have a meeting with Jason and Mike, and we have some bonding capacity, so we can do that.
Wonderful. So it, it really is largely contingent on the half of sales tax.
Very much so. That's why it's so important. We really wouldn't have a plan without the sales tax. We'll just be do, and continue doing maintenance on our schools. Then also, the Chana Lakes Middle School is really, really, elementary school is really, really over. So in the outy years, we have a new Winter Haven Elementary School. What site is that again? The Bentley?
Bentley.
Bentley side, on the Bentley side. And we have Kingsford replacement by Mulberry on the Bailey side, right? So we want to move the Kings, the Kingsford Elementary to the Bailey Road. This campus is really, really small. We want to build Kingsford big enough to relieve sites and per cell, and then we'll have the acreage there to do it. And at the same time, we can hold the students at Kingsford and then just move them over. There was a suggestion that maybe we could build a high school that we have in the plan, that I'll get to on the modernization, on the Bailey side, but it's much too small to do that. So with the plan is to build Kingsford on a new site, and then we can use Kingsford as a holding school. Just some growth, not just the social growth in the northeast area, all these red, with all the growth that will occur. Now, on the modernization, it was, and Pam helped a lot here, and so did some of the maintenance people. We look at the age of the schools. We look at the physical condition and the education adequacy, and we look at the utilization. We, we assign an index to all of them, and then we rank them. And if you notice, some of the schools are listless. They don't have numbers. And the reason I know that, because they, some go out into the sixth year. So I didn't put them, because we're just talking about the five-year plan. Mulberry, it seems a little bit at forty-eight million, but that is without site acquisition. We did look, we did call a developer, a major landowner, to see if we can get site from him, but we, that, that was not favorable. So we are back to looking at Mulberry Senior High and see if we can stage and phase our building. We will have to keep the auditorium there. That is one of our highest priority, to do that school. It's not so much on enrollment, it's on the physical condition. We have Albert Elementary, then Old Davenport School of Arts Southwest Middle. We're proposing that too for enrollment relief. Crystal Lake Elementary is kind of small, but that is the community school, so that will deviate a little bit. Lena Vista, we only have the planning in this five-year plan. Floral Avenue is the sixth year. Kingsford, we have all the money. Alter Vista comes in next year. Juanita planning only at two million, and Lake Alfred. We do have a list of all the other schools, like we have Alturas and other schools coming in. These are full modernization, where all the major systems will be replaced. It is like having a completely new school. Again, we have fifteen and one thousand five hundred and thirty-four building. Four hundred and twenty-eight buildings are over fifty years. So we really have to do something about that. Then we have the additions and remodeling projects. The remodeling is just moving around and upgrading. We have, I've heard Berto Senior, we have to do the second phase, and that's creating a classroom and tearing down like four buildings, Richard, and doing a classroom addition. We have Arbordale Central Elementary, it's a small school. Spook Hill Elementary. Again, Superintendent, I know we're lacking with hurricane area, EHPA area, the enhanced hurricane protection area. So we looked at Spook Hill being the oldest school in that area to see if we can do a classroom addition, accommodate growth, and remodel the cafeteria to provide for some hurricane capacity. If it's not for hurricane capacity, we still have to do something at the school. At Westwood Middle, we have a gym. At Eastside, we will redo the cafeteria, build a new cafeteria, and we'll remodel the cafeteria for offices. They have a lot of portables, but it's most, their need is mostly for office. At Stevens, we're modernizing Building One. At Edgar Padgett, we are doing some parking redo and remodeling Building Two. At Dixeland, we're trying to get rid of the portable so we can provide the school with a play area that they don't have. And we have to do some enrollment relief with Dixeland to Southwest Elementary. Gardner has, Gardner has some safety issues, so we need to work on that right away also. North Lakeland Elementary renovation, we have that in twenty-twenty-seven. The gyms, again, the gyms were in the original sales tax. And with, because we have covered Pavilion and all that, we did not do the gyms. So I'm, I'm bringing them back at the middle school in the sales tax, and it's at one, two, three, four, five, six schools. The safety and security projects. Every school will get some type of safety and security. There is seventy million in these projects over the fifteen years. Upgraded fire alarm system, intrusion alarm, camera, video surveillance, doors, card access, fencing. A lot of them have to do the main office remodel to create the single point of entry, where we have to really, so we direct them directly in, and they don't have access to the rest of the building. The school check-in management system and the security and data communication system. Then technology and future ready schools, certainly, we have to have the upgraded technology to make the, the students being able to keep pace with all this modern development happening. So wireless communication, classroom enhancement for project-based learning, flexible learning environment, the ITV studio, and necessary software. Maintenance of schools, we have a hundred and thirteen million in that, and that is our ADA compliance, or aesthetics of building, or HVAC lighting conversion, windows and doors of building envelope. Then in athletics, we have, we have a lot of fields that need to be resurfaced, tracks resurfaced, resuded, replace new fields. So we have eleven million in that. Other things in the capital plan, certainly, as I know Jason and Michael talk about debt service and insurance, we have to, we have to include buses and white fleet. We have money for portables. We have, for statutes, we're supposed to get rid of our portables that are twenty years and older. We have portables from the eighties. We have ninety-five portables that were built in the eighties. So we need to have money in there to be able to replace those. Site acquisition, as we, as the era continue to grow, and we need to acquire sites, especially in the northeast. We need money for that. Technology, we have the Bryant Stadium that really needs some maintenance and upgrade, and we have the Guardian Program startup cost. So that's what we have for now, and today, I need your feedback. I'll bring this back to the board, I think September fourth, whenever the board meeting is in September. And we are hoping that we get the sales tax. Without the sales tax, we really won't have a capital plan.
Mr. Wilson?
I'm going to go back to safety and security for a moment. What I heard you say, and I just want to verify that I'm hearing you correctly, is that every single school will receive some safety and security upgrade.
That's correct.
That may include cameras and video surveillance, door lock systems, card access, fencing, and office remodels for security. Because when I'm talking to folks about half some sales tax, I'm, I'm going to want to say that.
That's correct. That is correct. And I've been working closely with Rob's office, Captain Wiggins, with Sid from Tina's office, so we can identify these projects and prioritize them per school. Each school will have, with my green sheet pack. Each school will have a green sheet that has the project identified, what they will get, for every school. For example, this is Crystal Lake Middle. It's like, it's not a lot here. It's one-point-five million. And for safety and security, they're going to get a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred. So staff assess every school for maintenance project, for security. So we have a, we have a specific page for every school.
So, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Have questions? Yeah, questions? Tell them, then, so.
So that's, that's an individualized, like, profile for, for every school?
That's correct.
Second question, just to be clear, this, this, the, the summary document, is it accurate to say these are our top prior priorities for new schools, for modernizations? For, that, that's the list of?
That's correct.
So if people wanted to see, here's what we're prioritizing.
And if they want to know about the specific school, then we go to the green. This, as I call the green sheet. It's not really green.
And, and just one last, one, one, one last, last, last comment. I just want to reiterate my hope that we'll think about how we can reduce transportation costs down the line as we're, as we're.
I know Mr. Perron is working with Rob on that.
Ms. Sellers, then, Fields?
I just, I saw Berto High School. I know the second phase, they're expecting it, but it wasn't on the five-year, so it's on the fifteen somewhere. Do you know what year?
I do have it.
The Berto's second phase.
So many things. I have it here. Sorry. I have this spread out to fifteen years, and I don't know where it is.
Would you like, just to send it?
You can send it.
Yeah.
And the other question is, Mulberry, there's money here, but is there a plan? Because I know the challenges of Mulberry High School with the land that it's sitting on. So does this money being spent in nineteen and twenty mean that there's a concrete plan on how?
That's for the master plan, right?
Yeah.
That, that is to prepare the master plan.
That is to prepare the master.
That is to prepare the master plan, so we know how we'll do it. Berto, I have Berto's second phase in twenty-twenty-five.
Seven years out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Ms. Fields?
I have a couple of questions. On the Bailey Road property, is that the property that was supposed to be named Dr. Mackenzie?
Yes.
All right. And then on the sales tax program, we have different categories. Can you repeat the amount of money that's being budgeted for the safety and security, technology, maintenance, faculty schools, and epileptic? Do you have that?
Yes, I do. And Ms. Fields, I think you should have this also in your packet.
Okay. I didn't see it, but I'll look for it.
Okay, because that is.
If it's there, I'll look for it.
For safety and security, we have seventy million. For technology, fifty-eight million. For maintenance and health to school, a hundred and thirteen million. For athletics, physical education, for our overall well-being, eleven million. For renovation, two-hundred-and-forty-eight million, and for new schools, a hundred and forty-eight million. So this was, this was attached also, right, to the agenda item?
Okay. And then my last question is, I, I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure that my answer is correct. None of the significant growth projects like new schools can be done without us doing some type of bonding ultimately. Is that correct?
To be done right now, otherwise, we have to wait until we get the impact fee. That is correct.
And how long would we be waiting if we do not bond?
Well, to do one school is sixty, sixty-five million, and we're getting like fifteen, sixteen million a year, so.
Four, five years down the road.
That's correct.
And what would we do with growth if we don't have a place to put the kids?
And that is where we would have to use our LCI, or, or our sales tax money, and we pay for the impact fees comes in.
I understand. I just want to know that, because there's some discussion in the community about us not needing to bond. And, and I just want to make sure that it's understood, that if we don't bond, some of these things will not get done. It would be four, five, six years from now before that can come to realization, if I'm understanding correctly.
In the CIP, we just, we had bonding for the high school and for Mulberry. Because we were hoping that when, we, after planning and rebuild those other schools, we'll have the money. But it's very possible we will not, and we'll have to use the sales tax money too.
Mr. Wilson?
And, and I like to address that, because I'm not, I'm not particularly crazy about bonding, but we could, we could theoretically, for example, as I understood it, there's fifteen million dollars available currently, impact fees.
That's correct.
So the, the sales tax will bring in forty-five million dollars a year, and roughly thirty of that is now being used to pay off. And roughly thirty of that is now being used to pay off the existing bonds.
Well, I, um, Mr. Peron can address that, but I think that the bonds will sunset when the sales tax sunset in December. So the new money will not, we will not have that of that anymore.
That's correct.
Unless we bond.
No, here's what I'm saying. So you're gonna free up, at the end of this year, when those bonds are paid off, you're freeing up thirty million dollars in sales tax money. So that's for two years, that's sixty million dollars plus the fifteen, that's the money that you could use for those. And if it takes three years to build a school, there's no bonding necessary if we were using the sales tax. Now, I wouldn't necessarily suggest that. I think we, we could bond, in my opinion, contingent upon the impact fees coming in and then pay them back that way. But I'm, I'm really not crazy about bonding the half-cent sales tax in and of itself. Only if we had a revenue stream to, to pay that back over time. So I mean, we're gonna free up thirty million dollars a year that we could theoretically use for those schools.
That's right, 'cause we'll get the full amount, 'cause we won't have the debt service.
Mr. Harris?
Pitying, uh, replacing Kingsford, and this might be more of a Pam or Richard question, I'm not sure. The current property that Kingsford sits on. Tell me the research that's been done, if any, on the property that's not ours, that's located on west and south of the campus? 'Cause it's all vacant land. Huge, huge portion of vacant land.
That's been offered up to us. Um, you would, there's a, a pit area right behind Kingsford, which that property wraps around.
South of it?
Exactly. So it kind of fragmented the campus if you spread out back over in there unless you, it's still eliminated the Kingsford campus where it is now.
What about west of the campus?
That's what I'm talking about, west.
What about south of the campus?
Well, south of the campus, there's a big pit.
Okay, I see that. And west of it looks like it's pastured land?
It is.
Not available to expand the campus?
It is. It would fragment the campus, you would have to develop it.
Well.
Because you got the campus where it is now, and you got a little strip of land to get over to the west area. So you'd have this long, rectilinear campus.
Unless you built a totally different kind of school and incorporated the western portion of the vacant land now into a.
That's, I kinda alluded to that. Build a new campus, like, west, and raise the building where they are now, and you could do something with that.
I mean, that, we already own that land, and, and I, I know that there's tremendous number of acres south and west of it.
I think it's like nineteen-hundred or something like that, it's a lot.
And I don't know who the owner is, uh, but that'd look like an opportunity maybe for that school or some other schools to be rebuilt there.
It, it's really, traffic-wise, it's hard to get in and out of there too. So it's not just the land availability. It's the neighborhood you're driving through, it's a little, it's not even a collector road. So there are some other issues with that.
Any other questions?
Um, and I know we've talked about this a little bit, but I don't, I don't see it on the list. And it's really just a question, if you don't have an answer, that's okay, I'm not, I don't wanna pressure on it. But I know, I know Spook Hill, they have a desperate need for some administrative space too. I, I mean, when I'm over there, their, their only bathroom is a, is a janitor's closet. That was a janitor's closet, so it's pretty. And, and I don't know if that's included in here, but they, they, I, I know they requested that, and it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty difficult situation.
Okay, and that's what we're doing also. We got feedback from the schools with their three top priority projects, so we're comparing them to what we have.
Okay, thank you.
And to make sure we're addressing their concerns.
Thank you, and I know you, I know you've been talking to folks at Frost Group as well about some help for them. Thank you very much. And, and let me say thank you, Mrs. Etcher, for your leadership and your expertise in managing these things. It's very, it's very welcome, thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
Um, just, uh, you know, did, like, I, as a board member, really appreciate the foresight that prioritize things. And thinking of the general public, um, we should probably make sure we have a very, very long list that's available for them to see. Because, I mean, just 'cause those are priorities doesn't mean there aren't a billion other needs. Um, but, so just, just from a, a perception point of view, make sure that big, long list is available.
Yes, we do have them for a time, thank you.
Thank you all so much. Then next we'll have HR, HR to come. And that will be followed by Mr. Peron, Lieutenant Page.
Good afternoon. You have updated, I put a paperclip binder, a couple of sheets on your computers earlier today. That's an updated list of the school staffing plan. There's actually page. Thirty-three, page two, page thirty-three, thirty-five, and fifty-five were all updated. Um, so for the school site specifically, we went through, we didn't make any major substantive changes to them. However, we did do some cleanup, and that's on page two. So first, you'll notice the fine arts, we added two itinerant fine arts to teachers' units. Also with elementary staffing. Laurel Elementary has been changed from a K-four to a K-five. That's in line with the majority of our elementary schools around the district. Lake Mary and Creek, again, changed from a five-eight to a six-eight. And then in the magnet choice world, we have Dundee Elementary changed from a K-four to a K-five. Devonport School of the Arts, we changed their PTN there from eleven-oh-seven to eleven-fifty-one. And then we also added seven teaching units to that, um, area. Also, Dundee Ridge Academy is changed from a five-eight to a six-eight. I think originally on your sheet it says six-nine.
Circle to ask.
You apologize about that, so, sorry about that. Um, and then last, Lake Alfred Polytech Academy has been changed from a five-eight to a six-eight. So what you'll notice is we are really segmenting our schools. K-five are all elementary, middle schools generally follow this six-eight pattern, and then high schools are nine-twelve, okay? And last, the learning centers. So Gina Dell and Dora Sanders previously had AP twos, um, as they are, they had one principal and one AP two. Um, that caused a bit of confusion and difficulty for the principals, because when they would leave the campuses, the AP twos could not do any evaluations. And so, um, in order to allow them to really do evaluations, we decided to increase that allocation from the AP two to an AP one. Okay, do you have any questions on the school staffing plan?
We don't have any that are not left, that are not the K-five, six-eight, nine-twelve, other than our elementary schools together.
Lewis Anna and Lewis Elementary. So Lewis Elementary is pre-K through three. And Lewis Anna is four and five, right? So, other than that, I, I don't think, can't think of anything else, any others?
Thank you.
Okay, now on to the district staffing plan, that is behind tab three.
Do we have any other questions for you on the district? Make sure on, um, school staffing, make sure we're all on.
Okay. So on tab three, there are some substantive changes that we made to the district staffing plan. A lot of it was just changing the reporting lines. Um, we can go through those. So the administrative chart, um, number one, a reporting change. We are, the associate superintendents are moving from the superintendent to the deputy superintendent. Again, school board, chart two, administrative change. So we're unfunding the secretary position, that part-time position was still there. That was Susan Worbington's old position, so we're just unfunding that. Um, superintendent's office, chart three, a reporting change from the assistant superintendent of facilities and operations, information technology services, um, from the deputy to the chief financial officer. Next page on chart four, the public relations, a reporting change. The analyst is, um, now reporting to the senior coordinator strategic partnerships from the senior coordinator, public relations. And also Pope Education Foundation is now moving from the public relations officer to Mrs. Byrd. Deputy superintendent, chart five, the regionals, they are now reporting directly to, um, the deputy superintendent. And the associates, um, are now reporting directly to the superintendent, as well as executive staff. Teaching and learning, um, there's a reporting change there as well. Preschool programs is now moving to the chief academic officer. The assistant superintendent of multiple pathways is also now moving to the chief academic officer. And then the federal grants, federal programs and, um, I'm sorry, federal programs is now moving from the chief academic officer to the chief financial officer. Any questions, Ms. Byrd?
One quick one. On the, um, on the unfund areas, assistant superintendent fund the community liaison director. Is that, that's, that's the Winter Haven position? And the sort of, I guess, the idea is that if it works there, we'll, we'll pile it up? Okay.
Um, and I'll address that. That is, after meeting, um, with the community in Winter Haven and Pet Food, there, there was not a need for the assistant superintendent. They'd rather have that liaison with the community, which we have changed job description, which you'll see that in here. Um, and my goal is to have this one, work through this one as, this is the first. Work through it, and then look if we can branch that out into the other areas in the upcoming years.
That's good.
May I comment on that?
Yes.
Superintendent Byrd? In my opinion, we talked a lot about align Nashville and align Pope. And one of the questions is, how do we make that happen from a practical perspective? And I think this is a logical way to do that, because this is somebody out in the community who's looking for resources in the community, bringing them back to her school district, so. And I only say that because as we work through this, we kind of gravitate towards something that I think makes a lot of sense from a lot of different perspectives. Helps us do, do better alignment of the resources that are available to us in the community and aligning those back to our school districts, so. I, I hope this is, I hope this is a, a successful approach and that we can expand it.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think, you know, this got talked about a lot in the 2016 campaign, this rough community idea, and I think to see it, you know, you know, we went through some ups and downs and getting it, I'm, I'm anxious to see how this works, so.
And I, just from being in those meetings, I can't tell you the level of community support that this position has and how excited. I probably get three phone calls a day of, when's it gonna be posted? When, when can they start that the community is so excited to have this person?
So this position is a new JD, and so if you flip to chart, I'm sorry, to tab seven, it is that first JD down there, if you'd like to look in detail at that position. Okay? I lost my place. Sorry?
I think we're teaching and learning.
Thank you. Chart eight, assessment and accountability. So we worked with Ms. Riley Hawkins to really reorganize her office overall. So we're unfunding the director of measurement and evaluation, and senior coordinator, student learning, and student learning evaluation, and a technician. And then we're adding one specialist, assessment, accountability, and evaluation. She's really just repurposing the positions that she has in our office to make it a bit cleaner. Also, in, on chart nine, the office of acceleration and innovation, it's a reporting change. The charter school office will now report to acceleration and innovation from multiple pathways. Um, and then with the MSAP grant, we're unfunding, uh, an IB coordinator for teachers and a resource teacher, and then we're doing a funding change for the STEM STEAM resource teacher from 2013 grant to 2016 grant. Chart ten, K-12 curriculum math, science, and physical education. We're unfunding a math and science program coordinator that was paid for by the MSAP grant. And we're adding one math curriculum specialist, grade six-eight. Chart eleven, K-12 curriculum literacy and media services, it's a reporting change there from the senior coordinator of student success, early learning system. From student services, chart twenty-one, to literacy and media services. We're also adding a curriculum specialist, a, um, I'm sorry, the curriculum specialist literacy, we're moving that position to supervise, um, media services. We're also unfunding a senior coordinator of media services, and then we're going to fund a district-based EOL coach position. Um, chart twelve, fine arts and ESOL, we're adding two itinerant fine arts teacher units. That was also reflected in the school, um, staffing plan. We put it on here because there's a sheet for fine arts. Um, however, it is actually on the school's blue sheets, and it will be, um, reported in their funds, not necessarily in the district's base funds. Chart fourteen, uh, multiple pathways, a reporting change, IST vocational WDIS support, specialist from informational services. Now it will report to multiple pathways. Again, chart eighteen, professional development, we're unfunding the principal on assignment. It's grant-funded, um, we're just gonna give that back to that grant. Chart nineteen, learning.
Who is that person? I couldn't remember who that was.
To the vacant position.
He's vacant.
Um, chart nineteen, ESC, learning support, fund one senior manager ESC area, and that's grant-funded, and then we're also going to fund a clerk specialist, which is also grant-funded. Chart nineteen B, learning support, behavior and mental health support. Um, Dr. Seinki really reorganized her whole area to comply with the mental health requirements from House Bill seventy-twenty-six. And as a result, all of these changes are there. Uh, but essentially, she's funding one director of behavior and mental health support. Um, that's fifty, fifty percent local, fifty percent mental health categorical. Uh, she's also funding one senior director, senior coordinator, excuse me, uh, mental health services, a hundred percent mental health categorical. Fund one coordinator, mental health services, threat and risk assessment. Fund one coordinator, mental health services, professional development, one hundred percent health categorical. Fund twenty-one, mental health facilitators, those are all one hundred percent mental health categorical. Fund one office system specialist, one hundred percent mental health categorical. There's also a reporting change there. Positions and programs move from student services director to, to behavior and mental health support director. Um, mindful schools and additional support positions, SUDNET, MTSS, social workers for bullying and PBIS. Uh, additionally, Dr. Seinki also reorganized chart twenty-one, a director of student services, and, um, section five oh four, there's a JD revision and a funding change from one hundred percent local to seventy percent local and thirty percent grant. Also with the secretary three, funding change from one hundred percent local to seventy percent local and thirty percent grant. There's also a reporting change there, psychologists pre-K from ESC to student services. Business services, chart thirteen, federal programs and grant management, there's a reporting change. Federal programs moves from chief academic officer to chief financial officer. Um, also, student assignment specialist from title one program, senior coordinator to private schools, principal on assignment. There's also a clerk specialist from principals on assignment to federal and finance programs, a senior coordinator. Funding changes to senior director, federal programs, and grant management. And then also, they are going to unfund eight migrant parent educator positions, and then unfund a TRST, Twenty-First Century, and fund a district coach instead, same grant, Twenty-First Century grant. Um, and also, there will be a secretary three position added. Chart twenty-two, the informational systems and technology, chart A, there's a reporting change there. Analyst is moving from web services, I'm sorry, moving to web services from public relations, chart four. And then on chart twenty-three, informational systems and technology, unfund the analyst, the IT programmer, and then fund a IST slash FTE analyst trainer. Also, chart twenty-seven, students, uh, support services, excuse me. Chart B, we're adding the director of district safety specialist, which was board-approved on four-twenty-four eighteen. And then we're also adding the ninety school safety guardian positions. Twenty-eight, chart twenty-eight, business services, finance, uh, we're, we're going to remove the senior director, Florida retiree benefits consortium, and it's no longer housed at Pope. I think Duval picked it up.
What happened there? What, we did drop the law?
No.
My turn is fine. My turn is fine.
Yeah, they, um, we had been, uh, the, uh.
Fiscal agent?
Fiscal agent, sorry. For that, um, when it first started, they didn't have one, we stepped up and took that over.
Right.
Um, the current director, that position that we're talking about, uh, was in Duval and lives in that area, and it was a lot easier for them to pick that up. Matter of fact, I think they housed him there, and he has a satellite.
Matter of fact, I think they housed him there, and he has a satellite office. So, they came to us saying they were looking for another fiscal agent. And so, it is less of a burden for us, so it actually.
So, that person wasn't living here?
Oh, no.
No.
And that was, that was a little difficult because there were, you know, and in terms of time off and days and, you know.
Why didn't we just hire someone local?
We went statewide.
Yeah.
And when they did the.
And we didn't require them to relocate, only hired them.
Okay, and then chart 29, business services, risk management. We're going to fund one supervisor employee benefits. In human resource services, chart 30, personnel and recruitment and certification compliance. There are job description revisions there. Essentially, we're adding the classification and compensation department. We're revising some of the jobs that are already in our personnel department. So, that will be now a senior coordinator of classification and compensation and analyst classification compensation. The director of recruitment and certification compliance, that's a name change. The coordinator of recruiting, that's a downgrade. Personnel assistant one, recruiting and retention, we're adding that retention piece there. And then the secretary two, to a general clerk, that's the same pay grade. We're also going to unfund one senior technician and personnel. We're going to add a new position. It's called a teacher engagement leader. We're also going to unfund a TRST nickel B or no child left behind. And instead, we're going to fund a certification specialist. Also, on chart 31, labor and employee relations and diversity and equity management, unfund a employee relations specialist and a personnel assistant one. And instead, those positions will be combined to two other positions, a technician, labor relations, and a technician, employee relations. We're going to unfund an analyst negotiations and instead fund a coordinator, labor relations, unfund a personnel assistant one, and then instead fund a personnel assistant two. Last, the job description revisions for director of employee, I'm sorry, labor and employee relations, we're changing. It was just employee relations. And we're adding a, another job description, a specialist, pre-employment services, and public records. We're updating the specialist job description to include public records because we received so many public records requests.
I appreciate the response to the public records. What's the general thinking around some of these changes? What are, what are you trying to accomplish or changing, or is there any change? What's, what's going on there?
What I note specifically in labor and employee relations, it's all kind of meshed together, and so I'm trying to really bifurcate the duties and separate them out. So, one side of the house will be specifically labor relations, which deals with collective bargaining, anything dealing with a collective bargaining agreement and grievances of that nature. Another side will be employee relations, which deals more so with discipline. We would like to now, well, one of the things that we are doing now is taking back from principals, the disciplinary process and them writing the letters and issuing the discipline. That's all now coming from HR specifically. So, I needed someone in the office to, to write the letters so that we could review them and then issue them to the principals and make it a cleaner, smoother process. Right now, we don't have a tracking system either for employee discipline. So, again, bringing that in-house, and one of these positions, specifically the employee relations technician, will track all of our employee discipline, be in charge of inputting that data into the system. So, now we can track an employee from beginning to end. All of those changes, if you look at behind tab four, this is the budget sheet for those changes. So, I know it sounded like a lot of changes. There were just, again, a lot of reporting changes. However, overall, the total cost to the district is now less $230,000. So, it says savings of $230,000 overall.
Some of the reporting, as we look at things, we wanted to make sure things were cleaner and divisions set where they really should sit. So, try to keep academics sitting with academics so that that's a cleaner line. And one thing we heard from principals and other departments that they really didn't know who to report to, and then they always refer to someone else. So, we're trying to make sure everything now is really in alignment and it's a cleaner process.
One quick question about moving, as I understand this, on the charter school office, this would be sort of a returning to the way it was some years, years ago when it's, so they'll, they'll, they'll report up to Carolyn, is that, is that correct?
So, I would like to comment on that. They currently were in multiple pathways, and that really, to me, looking at that does not fit there. You want to put, no, where they have a choice, you have different choices, that is a choice. And sitting over there with Carolyn in there, and she has the expertise and people in her office, and they all work together. They've been for the last several months already working together in that, in that area. So, it's like, again, just aligning people where they best sit.
Yeah, I want to comp, comp, compage you guys on this. I think I like all of this on, on space. Looks, looks, there's a lot of logic here. Oh, one last thing. On the, on the, on the community person, we've talked about unfunding an assistant superintendent. Was that a speculative position that we were going to give, and we've changed that out? Or was there actually, or was there actually, like, is that someone's position who's going away, or was that like a speculative?
No one was in it. It was actually, we brought it last year.
Okay.
And we never moved, but no one was actually in that position.
But it was funded and inputted.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, I would like to echo, excuse me, Mr. Townsend's comments. I think it's a huge organization and probably requires continuous review of positions to ensure that things are aligned appropriately and operating efficiently. So, I, I fought the effort too, so thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Proon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can I ask a question before Mr. Proon, sorry, to the lady with staffing?
Yes.
And Mr. Proon, this is probably a question for you. As I'm looking at the staffing plan, one of the things that got, caught my attention was all of the green, which is grant funded. We have a tremendous amount of grant funded position. Do we have a sense, and if you don't, it's okay, it's just, it's just a general question. Do we have a sense about how much of our overhead we fund through grants? I mean, that would be a huge selling point. I'm telling the community.
When you say overhead?
Yeah, like, and when I say overhead, I'm talking about positions that are not in the classroom. How much of that's grant funded? I mean, if we could say that the 67 districts were 64th in administrative overhead, and by the way, half of that is grant funded, that's a huge, huge selling point.
We can get you that figure in terms of administration owned?
Yes, well, anything that's not in the classroom, yes, sir.
We can get you that.
Okay, thank you.
Don't move it off the top of my head.
No, I'm.
All right, we've got two, two handouts. Last week, we handed out the tentative budget book that looks like this. You don't have yours, I have extra copies. I also am attempting to do a second PowerPoint at the same time. We'll see if this works, it may not. But I provided a second PowerPoint presentation that's essentially going to guide us through this tentative budget document that you have in front. So, the beginning of this presentation is to bring us up to speed about where we are in our budget. And this, this first slide really speaks a lot, in my mind, to the funding of, of schools. And what we're looking at here is our school taxable value, our property values. This goes back to 2007, which is the beginning of, maybe 2008, beginning of the recession that we went through. And we hit a peak of $36 billion back in 2009. And it has taken about 11 years to get back up to the same taxable value that we were 10 years ago. Now, at the same time, millage rates have been rolled back. And what, what we mean by rollback is, a rollback rate is the same, is the millage rate that it takes to earn the same amount of taxes or revenue as in the previous year. So, as the state has rolled back those millage rates, it has handcuffed our opportunity to raise more revenue through our local taxes. And one of the resolutions that will be voted on tonight will be to accept that state mandated 4.003 millage rate for required local effort. Have I lost somebody yet? That's my goal here.
Can we say now?
Please.
We want the IRA?
Okay, the FEFP funding per student, which is the main driver for the FEFP calculations. We've seen this slide quite a few times over the last several years. As you can see, 2007 and '08, that was our highest funding per student. By the FEFP until this previous year, 2017, '18, on the fourth calculation, we ended right at $7,000 per student. During that time, our revenue strength, but our expenses have increased, and that brings us to where we are today. This next slide is to give you an idea of how we have really funded the district over the last several years with a decreased revenue. So, what I want you to take a look at is the line, the deficit line, 4 million, 86,000 in the 11, 12. That is expense over revenue. Going back to 11 and 12, we have had a deficit, a deficit situation that's caused us to hold money from fund balance. That's kind of why our fund balance has shrunk over the years. And another piece of that is the LCI transfer. We talked about the LCI transfer. That's where the state statutes allow us to, allows us to divert some of that LCI funding to cover maintenance labor costs. And we have had to utilize that 8.4 million to offset that deficit. Back in 2015, '16, we did not transfer and gave LCI the full amount. But just, again, to give you an idea of the situation we're in, that deficit without the LCI transfer, had we not transferred that 8.4 million, we've been running about a 10, 11, 12 million deficit every year since 2012.
Questioner?
Yes.
Looking at your bottom line there on that slide, would it be an accurate statement to say that five out of the last six years, this district has operated in the red by living on its savings account?
That is an accurate statement.
And without that adequate savings account, we would have been laying people off left and right.
That is correct. Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions before I move on? Okay, so, so now we're going to get into this nice little tentative budget handbook that you have. I just want to go through some highlights, and you asked me questions as you, as I come along. This year, we're going to see about a 3% increase in, 3% increase in our FTE. Our, we are one of the top two districts in the state with growth. As you look around the state, there are several of the large districts especially that have, either have flat growth or negative growth, and that has put them in a situation where they've had to, to lay off, lay off staff because of that.
Which county is it would that be?
I'm sorry?
Which county is would that be?
Hillsborough. No, Hillsborough is the one that comes first to mind.
Broward did, didn't, didn't Broward have to do a bunch, bunch of cuts?
I don't know essentially what they did to balance their budget, but Broward did have a, have a decrease in their funding because of, of a lack of student growth. The state gave us all the districts a 47 cents increase in the base student allocation. The reason the base student allocation is important is that's the primary pot of funds that we have to give raises, to pay for health insurance. And after Polk got its DCD, we only had an increase of 3 cents per student. If they would have just given us zero, I would not have had to change the budget document at all, but. Yeah, that, that 3 cents adds up to about $3,000 for, for our $850 million general fund. Polk County was very fortunate. The legislature did a one-time compression allocation to several districts because of the funding issues in these districts. And that was 7.8 million dollars we received one time. At this point, that allocation expires in June of 2019. So, the legislature would have to act on that to, to make that reoccurring.
Wendy did say she's going to push that to be recurring, but probably not. Need holds our breath for that, but we'll try.
What happens if we don't get that?
Excuse me?
What happens if we don't get that?
Well, when we sit down next year during budget deliberations, we will show that as a revenue reduction, and therefore, we'll have to make decisions on, on how to come up with that, whether it be a reduction in staff or, it'll just be a, it'll be a negative in terms of our current revenue, and then we'll figure out how we need to prioritize things that we need to reduce. Hopefully, it'll be offset with a increase in the base student, but based on what we've seen the last three or four years, I, I don't see it happening.
And I think over the last few years, as we have used our savings plan to, to float the district, the district has made a good effort to lessen the impact in classrooms. And as we go forward, if there's no change in, in the way the state operates, the impact is going to be felt in the classrooms. This year, we have a new categorical. It's our understanding that this will be a categorical, which means the funds are restricted. The mental health allocation of 2.4 million. Couple other highlights, safe schools allocation.
If I can just jump in. Part of the reason I wanted the order to be changed is because you saw how that, that allocation was being spent when Ms. Porteous did her staffing plan, because most of that increase was in the mental health and ESC. So, we're just giving you the highlight. I wanted you to have the detail a little bit before we went up here.
Safe schools allocation categorical saw quite a big increase this year in response to the shooting at Hartland. We are receiving an additional 3.3 million for safe schools. The caveat in the legislative language this year is the additional funds can only be spent on school resource officers or guardians. Previously, with those funds, we, we had some latitude, as long as it was a safe school type of expense, maybe security cameras, for instance, could be, could be spent out of that allocation. But at least with the new money, it can only be spent on personnel. However, that 3.3 million, it's going to cost in the neighborhood of $4.5 million to hire the guardians. So, that's another million dollars that's taken away from the classroom to support this initiative. Our total FEFP funding, we're going to see a 40.9 increase over our adopted budget. Most of that's tied up in the highlights I just went over. 18.6 of that new funding is discretionary, meaning that we have the opportunity to use those funds where we see fit. But the majority of the increase is in categorical funds. This is the state's MO. As they give you a little more money, they tell you how we have to spend it, so.
So, just a reminder, on the 18 million discretionary, the big chunk of that is that.
This.
Compression.
Compression.
So, it's discretionary. So, it's discretionary, but only half is going to be hopefully, only half recurring. It's not all recurring, unfortunately.
And those budget highlights really outline this little spreadsheet that's very difficult to read because of how small the numbers are. And what I've highlighted in yellow highlights the funding compression, the safe schools allocation, and the mental health. So, in a nutshell, that's what our FEFP is going to look like this year. And the majority of the discretionary spending increase of 12 million is really the increase in the number of students that we're seeing. Some new expenses this year. The last couple of years, we have not increased the fuel budget, and we have had to take a million dollars a year away from fund balance during the year to pay for those fuel increases, so we're budgeting an extra million dollars this year. FRS had a slight rate increase, which will cost our district about $1.5 million. And then the raises that were given during this past fiscal year will cost about $8.1 million as a recurring expense. Personnel changes, you just saw the staffing plan presented. School-based units during the year, fiscal year '18, have totaled about $9.1 million. There are 403,000 for five new psychologists. Also, there's Title I shift to general fund. You know, this past year, we had a one-time allowance to use some rollover funds. That, that is restricted now, so there's about $600,000 in coach positions that would be funded by the general fund, along with the continual professional development of the DA schools and the incentives for those employees. That totals about $5.2 million.
Those coaches are academic?
Yeah, no, they're active.
Thank you, because you didn't say.
I did not.
And the public's perception of the word "coach" is not academic.
That's for sure.
I don't think.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Let me just go back, Jason. There's, on the personnel changes, I just don't want to be misled, that we gave out a number of positions for that $9.1 million, but we received a number of new students over the course of the year. And we got revenue for that growth during the year, during FEFP. If you remember, in February or March, we updated the new revenue based on the students. And so, we got revenue in for that. I just didn't want to think we didn't budget for that, or didn't receive some funding to offset that.
Mr. Townsend?
On the, on the new expenses, like, I don't expect to see this, this year, but I know we're in the process of trying to work out health insurance issues. I think it would be extremely wise of us starting next year, I guess, or whatever comes out of, to budget something as an, as an index increase every year. I, I don't know what that number is, but I certainly want to see it. I, I want to see that added into the budget. I don't want to do nothing for five years and then jump again. You know, I think we should be.
So, if you recall during deliberations, I had put in a line item for employee benefits. And so, based on the board's direction to be more flexible with the 5% fund balance, based on that information and what we have in the fund balance and in the tentative, we are still negotiating that, those benefits, and we'll, we'll have a proposal to you hopefully in the next month.
Yeah, that's not really what I'm talking about. I, I just think we, as a board, need to understand that health insurance costs are not going down.
Okay.
And we need to be not going years at a time without indexing our kind of contribution. I don't want to interfere with, I mean, you guys are sort of setting a baseline now for how we're going to move ahead. I think as we, we move ahead, that's something you, I think we really need to have built into our, our regular budgeting.
From Mr. Harrison, Ms. Wilson.
Mr. Townsend, comments are very accurate and much needed. However, that has been a call for a number of years, and the reason we have not done that is because we have continued to give out raises. And we had a choice. Increase the insurance payout per employee or give raises. And a lot of times, it came down to literally, we gave out raises instead of setting more money aside in the insurance. So, you know, there have been those of us who actively felt like what you're saying was the right way to go. And the district didn't go that route because we gave out raises instead of increasing the money set aside for insurance.
Well, I'm not criticizing anybody for that. It's, it's just a, it's, it's a compensation pack, package. I mean, and I, precisely because I don't know what that number is, I just want it factored into our, our thinking. It may shift year, year, year to year related to, to the raises. You know, it's, it's going to be dependent on a million different things. I just want it built, built into how we're, we're thinking.
Ms. Wilson?
And I agree. I, I agree with both statements. I think that the challenge is, from a practical perspective, how, how we do that. I think that's the, that's going to be the challenge. And, so, we need to have some discussions about that, I think, and maybe you can, maybe you have some ideas that you could bring forward. But that's the challenge, is figuring out how do you, how do you build that in? Do we do that as part of the, I'm assuming that would involve the PEA in, in part of the negotiations with them? I don't know, but if we reach out to them, maybe, maybe we can work together to figure out a way to start, start building those increases in.
Well, that, that will be part of it, but back to Mrs. Fields' question about if that $7 million doesn't come in, we would deduct that. And if we decide that we need X funds for the health plan, we will put that as a priority too, as a, as a negative, just like Jason put in a million for fuel. We will put in health plan, and it'll be a number. It'll come off the, it'll be an appropriation against the expense, and then we'll see where we end up and what the balance is, and that will be for discussion with the board.
My question was connected to all that. On this 2018, '19 new expense, I didn't save any money for health insurance, and I know we are negative in our days. I know the state requires us to have some kind of balance, some kind of days balanced, and I thought we were going to have to pump some money in, but I don't see it on this page. So, where is that money?
So, the answer, so the answer I gave Mr. Townsend. I anticipated that, so I answered, well, I answered with his question, which was a little bit different. So, we did set aside during deliberations, an amount for benefits, employee benefits, which included hopefully raise and something to the plan, and we're still in the middle of that. But we do have that set aside within the fund balance based on, and maybe we can get into this, and then we could go from there.
Yes.
After this slide, we could talk about that.
So, wouldn't it be on this page, though? Wouldn't you?
Well, because we're in the middle of negotiating, and we do want to put that in there and aside, but let him finish this, and then we, and then I'll.
What comes after this?
Hold on, I have to spill some.
What comes after this? Maybe I need to just wait.
Yeah, if, if.
Okay.
So, page, page two in your handbook, which looks like this page, is a summary of general fund?
Jason, hold on a second. The board, the board chair, I'd like you to recognize Ms. Capazola.
So, I think what I'd like you to know is that our, our negotiating team has also talked about the importance of budgeting for increases routinely for health insurance, understanding that it's one pot of money. What we hope to avoid in the future is, Hillsborough had a 25% increase come to their bargaining table, which is devastating. If we can do little jumps in insurance on a routine basis, we can stop that from happening. So, we actually are in line with talking about doing that into, in the future to make sure that we are able to do both, and that's the key for us. You have to do both. You have to increase wages and benefits, you know, but, but benefits are a, a component of what we do. It is a pay component, and we're trying to help people understand that as well, that it, it is all part. There's not a special fund of money set aside over here for benefits. And so, anyway, we're, we're not opposed to that far.
Thank you.
So, this tentative budget that you see before you on page two is just a snapshot in time. According to the TRIM statutes, truth and knowledge, the superintendent's required to present a tentative budget, which we advertised in the Lakeland Ledger this past weekend. And so, this, this was a snapshot of about two weeks ago. So, during this time, during the summer, the finance staff, the accounting staff are working to close, close out the previous fiscal year. And so, this is, again, just a snapshot in time. With this snapshot that you have before you, and some of the highlights I discussed, we would have a pending fund balance, a budgeted fund balance of 3.17%. That means that we're budgeting 100% of all of our positions. With that in mind, we normally see about a 2% lapse that were unfilled during the year, positions during the year, and we would anticipate this plan to end around 5, 5%. That's without discussions for an employee benefit package.
So, around, probably this time last year, we were having conversations, and the numbers were very similar. It was a 3% fund balance budget, and that we would end in the low fives. And that's when the board decided to be flexible with the projected ending to go closer to four. So, that difference, if the board chooses again, will give them the flexibility, or give you the flexibility to offer some kind of employee benefit. So, that is where that is, and that's, so, we, we can talk about that. So, just one, and again, we're in the middle of negotiating and talking with the, and everything's going fine. So, hopefully, like I said, in a month, we'll have a package with both a health and a salary component. I hope that helps.
Attached, the rest of the book will not attach, but the rest of the booklet is some backup data for our school-based positions. You can look at that by school at a department level. But we'll be working over the next month to work on a, an adopted budget that we bring before you first Monday, or first Tuesday in September. I did want to also touch on capital outlay. Ms. Usher had given you some insight on our LCI funding. You know, our LCI funding pays for a lot of things here at the district. Buses, our white fleet, our, some band equipment, athletics, and these are things that if the one and a half cent, or the half-cent sales tax does not pass, these are the things that would most likely go away to try to support our, our buildings and our facilities. I did want to touch on that, you know, since the Parkland shooting happened, our priorities are a little different than they were a few months ago as far as school hardening. So, there's a committee that's been put together to, to try to draft a school hardening plan to say, this is what you want our schools to look like, and we would work towards that goal. And so, any new money that we're receiving in LCI this year, which is about $4.5 million, is going to go immediately towards hardening our schools. We have a number of schools that don't have security cameras at all. Campuses have issues with those radios and communications across the campus. This year, we're going to give cameras, each school does not have a camera system, we'll get a camera system, and we'll be able to provide radios to those schools to make sure they have communication across the campus. The other things that we have to decide on, such as point of access and fencing, those, those items are very expensive, and will take a few years before we're able to get those campuses up to where, where they should be as far as the school hardening aspect.
While you're speaking of that, you might also think about, we have a lot of locations that are not where students are, but their offices that maybe you need to think in terms of camera security there.
And we have. We've identified about 140 locations that will need some attention for, for security hardening.
Ms. Philson? Ms. Philson, Ms. Solis?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So, what percentage of our schools do not currently have cameras? Y'all know the percentage?
We've got about, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 30, 35 schools. As a percentage, that's a third.
Okay. And then, my other statement is just that, it's a statement. I think that we are going to have to look to be proactive as we start looking at our budget situation. And I think that we need to start looking at what is the worst-case scenario, and what monies we know to be fire monies and true monies, and the compression money is not. And then, if that goes away, what does it look like for our school district? And then, what are we going to have to alleviate? And I think we're not going to get anything significant from the state. I don't envision that happening, and I don't think you do either. And so, rather than for us to just sit and wait, and I'm not saying that we're doing that, I think that we just need to start having some serious discussions, some tough discussion, discussion, making some very tough decisions on what we're going to do for our school district. I think we owe that to our employees, we owe that to our students, we owe that to our families.
So?
What is, what is the dollar amount for 1% of our fund balance? Because.
Right on, about $8 million.
Eight million?
Eight point five.
Okay, 8.5. And so, we're scheduled to be at 3.17, so.
That's the budget.
That's the budget, but, and then you had 5.17, but you were looking at giving some of that for insurance and.
Yes, we'll bring that to you.
And raises. Well, that's what I wanted to know. I'm looking at you really expecting our actual budget, given what we, to be almost at 3%. Because if 15 million is 2%, 15, 16 million is 2%, that puts us at 3% if I'm doing my math just right. I, I'm real concerned at this point because 3% is very scary.
I would, I will not bring you a proposal, or I wouldn't recommend a proposal. I wouldn't say I wouldn't bring it, but I wouldn't recommend anything around 3%. I'm following what the board did, which came into.
To about four, but that only, 1% is only eight, eight million? Okay, I was thinking we were looking at a lot more than that for insurance and benefits. Am I wrong? Weren't we looking at a lot more?
Remember, it's a combination of the employer, expense to the employee, and then contributions from the employees to the health plan. So, you have to net them both out.
Any other questions?
I think it's worth, worth noting that when the governor, who's running for senate now, was asked about funding levels, the first thing he did was attack this, this for their fund, fund balances, said, "You're all sitting on money." That's what he did. That's what you're going to hear constantly. Again, I'm, I'm not for bringing it to three, but I am for, for keeping it four as a recurring thing, until the state actually decides it cares about this stuff. You know, I, I want the resources in my people's hands, not as a weapon for whoever. And, you know, that's, that's my position, and you will get no benefit, politically or otherwise, from, from keeping one. The lower we go in a responsible way, the more we, we can say we're not just having deb, 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 deb money on hand. Believe it, I'd love to have a 10, 10, 10, 10% balance, but that's, we're not an independent agency in that way. We, we are dependent upon that. deb, 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 deb money on hand. Believe it, I'd love to have a 10, 10, 10, 10 percent balance, but that's, we're not an independent agency in that way. We are dependent upon the money that comes down to us. It's just a reality.
Mr. Wilson?
Along those lines, I have some similar comments. It is quite frustrating to me, and I think quite inappropriate for the Speaker of the House to condemn school districts for being bloated administratively when they're the ones telling us what the money has to be used for. In particular, as we talked about categoricals. But just in general, the state of Florida pushes mandates on us, and it's not just the mandates. It's, they dictate how we have to manage those mandates and the personnel costs associated with it. And then tell us that we're bloated. I mean, if it wasn't so serious, it would be humorous. So that frustrates me. That's my soapbox for the day.
Any other questions?
Ms. Burdick, just, the last thing is tonight's meeting will be written into resolutions. The millages, Jason touched on the RLE, but the other two discretionary and the local capital for a total of 6.251 mills, and the board has to vote that in. And then again, we'll have a meeting in September for a final.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Melissa Brady will come forward with the Lake Wells High School projected enrollment.
I am bringing forward today Lake Wells High School's request to increase their enrollment for the 2018, 2019 school year. They are requesting a 50-student increase. As part of the notes, I wanted to make you aware of the fact that they do have a waiting list of 205 students. Of those 205 students, there are 120 Lake Wells, Babson Park students who are waiting to be admitted to this school. And that's basically it.
Do we know how many students are currently enrolled that do not live in Lake Wells or Babson Park?
Yes. As of today, there are, 75 percent of their enrollment is Lake Wells, Babson Park.
So that's 25 percent of 1547?
No, they, not as of today, because right now they're just enrolling.
Okay.
So...
So of?
Fifteen, a little over 1,500 students.
Gotcha. So that's, essentially, if they allowed only students from Lake Wells and Babson Park, they would have enough students for, is that not in violation of their contract?
What in violation?
Don't they, isn't because they're a conversion charter, they have to allow Lake Wells, Babson Park students?
Good question. So there are priority lists in the law. And so, of course, if you're a conversion charter, one of the priorities for a student to be admitted to the school is living within the former zone of the school. But some of the other priorities also give preference to military families. It also gives preference to governing board family, staff member family. So there is siblings, so if there were already students who attended the school, the sibling would get preference into the school. So there are several criteria, but one of the criteria is that students who live within the former Lake Wells high school zone do give preference to the school.
So of that 25 percent, do you know how many students do not fall into any of those criteria?
I do not.
Can we find that number out?
This is the major issue that I have with the whole city taking over the public schools and being charter, and then not taking the kids that live in that district. I don't understand. We keep telling, they tell us they're taking them, and then we see this, and I know you receive phone calls. I, can't we work out something so that they, you give them X amount of slots for extra kids come from, without the district? Because this is a unique situation. It's not like other charters who don't have a district. They must take, and we don't limit, this is the thing. We limit them, and they fill up with out-of-town kids, and then don't have room for their kids. Why are we limiting the number of kids, just like us? Look at Ridge Community. We're busting at the seams, but we're not telling them, oh, we can't take you, because that's their zone. Isn't there some kind of contract thing where we can make an agreement so that all of the Lake Wells kids have a spot at Lake Wells, no matter what their numbers are, and give them X amount of spots for them to take all of these other kids? I mean, I really am frustrated, because we're thinking about giving them the schools, and then we find out they always have waitlist kids from their town.
I see. I mean, is that inappropriate? But I thought we wanted to resolve this, and I have one thing that may resolve.
Ms. Brady?
I would just like a solution for this to be worked out with the district and Lake Wells to figure out, if we're looking at turning over all the schools, we've got to have, because it's a different kind of charter. They must have a way to take all of their local zoned kids. That has to be frustrating for Lake Wells. You move to Lake Wells, and the public school, because it is a public school, can't take you. Why can't we figure this out and work with, and work, I mean, it's the district and Lake Wells to work it out? But that's what I would like to see worked out, is not have this issue. I'm not so concerned about the number of students total. Maybe ask for increase in X amount of students they can take outside of Lake Wells and take all of their Lake Wells kids, just like all of our other high schools do.
Mr. Harris?
Several years ago, I spoke to one of the folks who was involved in the startup of the secession movement in Lake Wells. And they said that they wanted to secede from the union, because they were tired of their kids leaving town and going to school somewhere else. Then they come here today, and they tell us how terrible it is, that the kids who live in their community can't go to their schools, but they don't want to be inclusive and have all the schools under one umbrella, the full county public schools. They want their own. They want to secede from the union, they want to have their own toys, and they want to play with them. What I find a violation of public trust is what my two board members have been speaking of, is having room for kids outside the community, but not having room for your own kids in the community, when upfront you said you wanted to have a secession from the union, because you wanted to have your own school system. And now you say, I don't have enough room for my own kids. Oh, yeah, but I have room for other people's kids. That's a violation of public trust, plain and simple.
Well, I think the issue's a little more complicated than that, and we have been meeting routinely with them, and I think we've been working through some of the challenges. I would ask that Mrs. Brady and her team go back and work with them, and, you know, see how we can work through this. I mean, for example, as I look at this, it says that we have Lake Wells, 120 Lake Wells students not on the current waitlist, but they're requesting an increase of 50 students. Is that because that's the limit, that's the largest, highest amount they can increase? Could they ask for an increase of 120?
They could.
And would they be in a financial position to do that? Do we know offhand, to take on 120 new students?
I know. They may cut through this.
Mr. Dr. Aix, do you mind, excuse me, I'm Dr. Aix.
Thanks, Ms. Solis, for my ask and information.
Okay.
Lake Wells High, it does, it is close to the 100 percent utilization, but with the portables on site,
because they have portables right now, there is a bit of capacity, but it's very close to 100 percent utilization with the portables.
Thank you.
Ms. Philson, Ms. Solis.
I just had, I mean, you getting the information for Ms. Solis. Is there any way for you to find out the number of the students outside of the Lake Wells, and what city they live in, I mean, what city they're coming from, and they don't be 1500 well?
I know that 14 percent of the 25 are from Winnebago.
14 percent?
Which one's there, Mr. Townsend?
I just want to confirm, the, one of the attachments shows that the capacity per DOE is 1823, but per our agreement, it's 1530. Is that accurate, or is there less than that actually available, Ms. Sashar?
On the total capacity with the portables is 1732. The design capacity is 1623, and 109 portable capacity.
Thank you.
If I may, there is one, there is one catch with the conversion, and we had this clarified last year with DOE, that DOE counts student stations where we count, there's a different number that we use. And so we had to verify what truly a conversion charter's capacity was, because we had that question with McKeel last year, when we wanted to increase their capacity. So we had to actually get it in writing from DOE that they see student station numbers on the FISH report as their max capacity. So it's a little bit different, and I don't know what that is. I'll have to get with Mrs. Usher to find out what that student station capacity is.
She may have that.
Sir, Melissa, I think a student station at high school is usually 95 percent, at middle 90, and at elementary 100 percent.
Right, and, right, and the other thing is too, is we can max it to 100 percent as a conversion. So there's just, it's always, there's always going to be a little bit of a different goal, but, but to your point, they are, you know, they could request the increase. Whether or not they would be, you know, the 120, as Wilson said, but whether or not they're capable of doing that for this year, I'm not sure. I'd have to check with the school.
Mr. Townsend, then, Ms. Solis.
This gives me a headache. We endlessly talk at each other, and threw letters back to each other, and newspapers back to each other. Donna's right here. I mean, is it so, we just had Mary Ann say something. I mean, can we hear what she has to say? I mean, what's, it's, can we, can I ask the chair to see if four people want to hear what she has to say?
We can, but I think it's important that we hear the board members first, though.
Okay, well, then, here, let me, let me say what I want to say then. First, I want to, I had a work emergency, so some missed a very brief discussion on Bach McGlaughlin this morning. But if you look at what they've written down, that's a pretty considerable move. I mean, that's a kind of a move toward good faith. What we desperately need is exactly what Hazel just said. A regular working group that can work through this stuff, so we're not talking at each other, that we're talking like hu, human beings. There are all sorts of mechanisms that are, there are so many moving parts to Lake Wells, like Bach McGlaughlin in and of itself is just one moving part. Lake Wells High is just one moving part. We will never solve them if we do not talk to each other in a sort of meaningful, meaningful way. I guess that's point one. Point two is that if you look at what they talked about with Bach McGlaughlin in their letter, there's a comprehensive quality to it, and full disclosure, Robert Gibson is my cousin, as I say all the time. He was at my daughter's wedding. Yeah, I have talked with him, I have talked with Donna, I have talked with many, many people out there. I've also talked with people very much on the other side. There's a path forward together, that we can solve the Lake Wells issue for a generation if we will actually take it and work together on it. I would like to do that. The, I don't even know what the recommendation is here. Is there a recommendation? I mean, what's our, what are we, I'm sorry, I had to step, step out. Did you recommend, no?
No, I recommended the superintendent that we accept the 50 students.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's, that's on me.
But it's a superintendent's recommendation.
But we don't know how many of the 120 kids are Lake Wells kids?
We do, it's 120.
No, okay, so also, so 120 of those kids are previously zoned kids?
Yes, there are 85 that are not. So there are 205 total.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I mean, I think the most, one of the most disruptive things on the planet that we do is bust these kids away from Lake Wells. It's expensive to us, it doesn't, I mean, I, so, yeah, I think, is the reason we're not going to 120 because of the portable situation and the capacity situation? I mean, is that the, is there any reason why we wouldn't just go to 120?
I think, Angela, can you, can you talk to us about if they want the 120 with the capacity? Because I believe they're close to the 90, is it a 95?
Right. Their enrollment I have is 1568, and if we take 95 percent of 1732, it brings it very close, making it almost at 100 percent. So 95 percent of 1732. If you look at straight the capa, and it's 1732, it's with portables, it's with the five portables on site, and your enrollment is 1568. So if we look at it as 100 percent, it's a little less than, it's less than 200. But if you look at the 1732 at 95 percent, it's really not, it's not a lot.
I'm sorry, English ma, major.
Okay, 1645. So 95 percent of its capacity with the portables is 1645. Your enrollment is 1568.
Okay, I guess, I guess my question is, why would we not go as high as we possibly can? Somebody tell me why. What's the why on that?
What's the total, 65, what was that, 65? Am I correct?
So 1644 minus 1568. 68, 77.
Okay, so, 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 so why wouldn't we just go, what's the argument against it? That they're taking too many out-of-town kids for that? Our gram, is that, is that what our argument is?
Well, I think there's a little confusion at this point in time. I think the question is, how many, how many students could they take max at this time? And what I heard was 77. They've asked for 50, so we were just addressing the 50. It doesn't mean that we couldn't talk about 77, I suppose. Would it be possible to do that, Melissa? Okay.
Okay. I, I mean, for myself, I support getting as many kids who are from Lake Wells and Lake Wells High School as possible. That seems like a no-brainer to me. So I'll go with whatever the recommendation ends up being.
Ms. Solis, then, Ms. Philson, Ms. Solis.
Are there state laws? Because I'm looking at Ridge Community. I'm assuming we're over 100 percent capacity at Ridge Community. And we keep taking them because that's their zone school. My question is, is there the state not allowing conversion charters to act like a public school? And can they go ahead and take zoned kids?
They can take up to their building capacity, that's what the law says.
But, so they have different laws than we do.
And if they want to, if they requested portables, and the board allowed them to put additional portables, they could take up to however, whatever that would increase their enrollment. But it's always to building capacity. That's what the law is.
And that's the state law, even on conversion charters, which used to be a zoned school, but they don't have that, am I correct? They don't have that law for us?
That is correct. They do not, they do not have a zoned population. They have a population, you know, they have an attendance area that can coincide with the former tenant zone, but the rules are different for them than they are for us.
So that's a legislative issue?
Yeah, the only, the only, the legal constriction on, or boundary on how many they can house is their legal capacity. We deal with school zone issues, and what happens if you exceed the capacity of the school that has a zoned population? They don't have that conversation. They have the conversation, what is the capacity, the legal capacity of the school, period.
And is the legal capacity 95 percent versus 100 percent?
They can, they can max it to 100 percent.
So if we gave them the 100 percent capacity, is there anything to work out to not have this, give them 100 percent capacity, and in the fut, for future, I mean, it can't be this year, to work on limiting the out-of- Give them a hundred percent capacity and in the fut- for future, I mean, it can't be this year, to work on limiting the out of, if they're going to be their own school's system. Not to bump out Lake Wells kids where we have to go and bust them to some other school in order to bring in new kids. But to look at their hundred percent capacity and maybe give them more portables and, and increase it. But limit their out of town people, not unreasonably, if they move up to a hundred percent, that would almost give them the one hundred and twenty this year, right? Seventy-seven was.
Seventy-seven.
At a hundred percent of, at, of, at a hundred percent of FISH capacity plus the five portables, it's seventeen thirty-two. And that would give them a hundred and sixty-four new students.
Hundred and sixty-four, okay, so they could take their all of, because I don't want to see Lake Wells kids having to be bu- when they don't want to. They're not going to Harrison, they're not going to some other program. Why are we, why, we're about students. Why would we limit them from taking their own students? But at the same time, they have to be responsible in not bringing in so many out of town people that they're bumping their, and that can be, I believe that could be worked out, not here, but.
You and me both, we're there.
What?
You and me both, we're there.
Um, scary, isn't it, Mr. Townsend? Um, does it, if that makes sense?
Absolutely. Mr. Harris and Ms. Wilson?
Um, of the eighty-five that are not in Lake Wells, are any of those the other requirements that would have them bumping the one twenty that are in Lake Wells?
No, everybody who's left on the waiting list has not hit a priority category.
Okay. Um, and if we were to increase their capacity by the full one sixty-plus, is there something that we can get in their contract that says they'll leave thirty seats open at the beginning of the year? To be filled by Lake Wells students as they move in, in January or February into the zone?
Had to negotiate that.
I would be a hundred percent in support of giving them their full capacity as long as we can say, make sure they're saving seats every year. So that they're not bringing Winter Haven kids in to fill the, and Lake Wells kids move in in February and can't go to school there.
Mr. Harris?
The last two board members to speak, uh, exactly how I feel. Contractually, number one, admit every kid in Lake Wells before you admit a single person from anywhere else. Number two, if there are empty seats after that, you're telling me you want to bust kids from another neighborhood into your town? That's still violating public trust because that's not why you wanted to exist. But if you want to do that and people want to bust their kids across the county, go for it. Just don't ask us to increase your capacity to do that. So that's just a contractual issue, it's not a board issue. Just fulfill it with a contract that it says, number one, Lake Wells kids, period, end of story. And if there's somebody that wants to bust their kids across the county, then there's room, but you don't have to expand the school to do that. My question is, for public input in this issue, when does it come up for a board vote? Because that's when the public gets to weigh in.
This one is coming tonight. I think we had it back to back because it was pulled from the last one.
Yeah, it was back to back.
It's back to back.
So the public will get a chance to comment tonight, okay, great.
I, excuse, I, I have, excuse me, is there?
I, I think it just makes sense to allow them to have their capacity. But I, I also agree with the others that, what I would like to know, and I don't know if we can even get that information, is that the twenty-five percent, I think, that's coming from another community, why are they there? Are they there because the parents are working as a part of the, of the, uh, system? Uh, I'm not really sure, I would like to know that. But I agree that if, if we want to, uh, uh, have the opportunity for them to have all their kids from the Lake Wells, uh, community a part of their school's system, then we need to do that. It just makes common sense to do it. But I would like to know about the twenty-five percent.
Wes, I have a question because this is on for tonight, um, so that.
Yeah, what you, what you can do tonight is what you proposed here and, and grant the request to go to one twenty.
Okay.
Uh, if you want to do, if you want to do something else, uh, that includes a contractual negotiation regarding the preference for Lake Wells students first or whatnot, that would need to be another night.
Okay.
We, we have not negotiated that language.
And Sellers?
I, I would personally like the one twenty tonight, and then that gives forty-four more seats. But if it could be contractually, those seats are for kids that move in during the year so that they don't, that they can, if you move into Lake Wells, you can go to Lake Wells High School. It, if that makes sense, does it, I, that's something I might be in favor of.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, if they get, if their capacity is a hundred and sixty, I'd like to see us offer them one sixty. But here's the problem, I think this is the elephant in the room, um, is we can't roll up. So what's happening is, in many cases, you have students who aren't applying. And then they come back and they say, I can't go to Lake Wells High School. Well, they, they did, they're not going because they didn't apply. That's the real problem. It's not an issue of, 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 of the dis- of, like, well, saying, sorry, you can't come here. It is a charter school, they have to apply, that's the law. So in many cases, some of the complaints I get, when I dig into it, I find out they simply didn't apply. Whose fault is that? I don't know, but that's probably an issue that we need to address at some point in time. And, and one of the things that we've talked about, uh, in our meetings with McLaughlin is that they're going to be more proactive. McLaughlin is going to be more proactive in making sure those kids get those applications and understand they have to apply to get to the high school. So what's happening in many cases is they're not applying, then they're being told, oh, sorry, they, they show up. And they're saying, sorry, you, there's no rule up here, and that's not our fault, has nothing to do with us, that's state law. So they can't get in, and then they're disappointed because they're saying, this is my high school. Because it's a charter school, they have to apply. And that's where the, that's where, that's the elephant in the room. That's the thing that's creating many of the problems. So, uh, as I heard Mr. Bridges, whoever makes the motion this evening could make a motion, am I hearing this correctly, Mr. Bridges? For a hundred and sixty? Could we do a hundred and sixty, Mrs. Usher?
We do, I mean, we're taking up to the hundred percent, the capacity, yes.
At one sixty?
You can do that, but there will be no concomitant contractual provision requiring those seats to be made available to Lake Wells students. We have not negotiated that, we do not have that language. You can, you can increase the capacity, that's on your agenda, but there is, there is no other contractual.
I'm going to ask for a consensus of the board. Would we like to hear Mrs. Dunson's response to this? Or, would you be interested in that?
I would, my, my only comment was my vote would be to do a hundred and twenty tonight and then send staff before we re- I don't want them to fill those additional forty-five seats. Before we have it negotiated that they have to save seats for out of county.
So the motion saving would be for a hundred and twenty seats?
For Lake Wells students.
For Lake Wells students.
Well, it's, it's just, it's just a race, it's, we can't do that now, like, we can't do it contractually, but then we'll send staff out to the, this will eliminate the wait, the waitlist, in theory.
Right.
One, one, one quick thing, we could also have protocols in place that are unofficial, just, just out. The kid shows up at Winter Haven High or shows up at Haynes City High. We have applications for Lake Wells High on hand. You're not from here, go back to where you're from. We love you, you know, if you really want to stay, stay, stay here, you're, you're, you're entitled to stay, stay here, but you should probably go back to where, to where you're from. I, that would be an easy thing to do, um, on our end, it wouldn't cost you anything. It's just a matter of being aware of what the zip codes are, I think. So do I, can we, can I just put that into the, the staff idea when we were talking about?
And that should be reciprocal.
What's that?
It should be reciprocal, if they ask someone to show up.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, 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 no, I mean, every, everything's got to be reciprocal.
Okay. So we have that resolved?
Well, so, I mean, did we want to hear from Miss Dunson?
Well, I'm not, I'm sure, I'm not sure that I had a consensus from the board on that.
She just said tonight was when they were going to have a chance, so it was not like, it's going to be later.
So tonight?
So speak tonight?
Yes, ma'am. And.
Aren't you curious?
I am, I mean, it'd be, well, hey, we're just.
So let's, uh, we're going to take a short break, is that correct? That's superintendent, okay.
Okay, we're ready to reconvene. The next time you have this, um, from our PR division, as they have been doing a lot of work lately, not only did they work on the new logo, but they are looking at, um, our website. We've heard from lots of, um, our community and our parents saying, our website is a little difficult. So they've actually taken on a big task. And they're going to share with you today the upcoming, and look for any feedbacks that you would like to share with them.
Thank you, Mr. Merg, thank you, board members, for having us here today so that we can share with you this project that we have poured tons of time and energy and thought into for about the last year. I do just want to make sure you know who's sitting with me here today. I have Nathan Whaley, who's the senior coordinator and PR, he's helped oversee this project. And I don't use the word genius very often, but the last two people at this table really are geniuses. Sean Lawson and Eric McCallum, who are the web analysts, web service analysts in my department. They've done the true heavy lift on this. I also, in the back of the room, have two student interns, um, Jayden Smith and Owen Lawler. Uh, Jayden is from Auburndale High, she was on our branding team, and Owen Lawler from Martupi. They've been interning on this project, they've learned a lot about WordPress and web design. So I just want to make sure you know who the players are here. So just a quick review of the current website and why a redesign was so badly needed. Um, first of all, aesthetically speaking, our website had not been updated in about a decade, so it was long overdue for some attention and a refresh. Second to that, as you know, our goal five of our strategic plan is to promote the district and to, uh, improve public perception of the district. And we were missing a lot of opportunities with our current website. We have, uh, the few slider banners you see here, and we have our social media feed that was sort of stuck down here. I think it's pretty obvious, it was an afterthought as, uh, social media really took hold. Um, but besides that, we are not using the real estate of our website to tell our story, to sell our, to, to tell the good things that are happening here, to get people excited about their public school district. So we started this process about a year ago, oh, and I should mention, um, another big reason why this was needed was the very structure, the bones of this website. It was, uh, when you dig into it, you'll find that it was built based, really to reflect the organi- organizational charts of the district. So to navigate it effectively, you really had to have a working knowledge of what divisions do what and what departments fall under those divisions. Um, and let's face that, the fact that, that's a hard kind of knowledge to obtain, even for those of us who work in this district every day. So to ask the public to do that, um, was a, was a huge, huge ask. Um, and so as we were doing our research for, for this design, um, we did find most people didn't even bother to navigate the website. They reverted to the search bar to just, to go straight to what they might need. Um, and we, so there were a lot of opportunities for improvement. Uh, we started about six months ago, we launched, uh, the hub, which is our employee internet. Um, this has been in place for about six months. And what we did here, the current district website that you just saw, has about fourteen hundred pages worth of content. A lot of that content was geared toward employees. So we saw the opportunity to create an employee internet where we could shift all that employee-specific information and create for employees a true digital gathering place. It's also a very powerful communications tool. Two, two things I want to point out, we've been working with Mr. Hill's office to create a master district calendar so that our employees, at a glance, can see all their required trainings and meetings. Previously, these sorts of things were mixed in with the public-facing district calendar, and it was just, it was too much, it was overwhelming, it was confusing. So that's one advantage of the hub. We are also, we anticipate using the, um, the prime real estate here on the homepage to post district messages that are geared towards employees. So we, so students, or, so our employees feel that we are talking to them, we are sharing information directly with them, we're thinking about including them in that communication loop. Later this week, we're recording Mrs. Byrd's back-to-school message, it will be posted right there in that banner of the hub, so it greets employees as soon as they use the hub. Um, uh, another advantage of the hub is that it is accessible outside the school district network. Previously, you could only access the internet if you were on the school district network. So if you're at home, midnight, you forgot I need to fill out this form, now you're able to do that. Previously, you couldn't. But the hub really, it was essential to this overall web, web redesign project because it allowed us to shift about roughly, I'd say, close to half the content that we had out on our public facing site, we're able to now have on the hub. Um, so in through all of this, I want to just mention, we've taken a really high-touch approach. We did employee focus groups before we launched the hub to make sure we were building a tool that was actually going to be useful and meet our employees' needs. Uh, we've also met with every division and every department or made contact with them through email to figure out what content needs to be internal and what content needs to be external. So once we streamlined the, the content that we had out public facing and we put it, we put it on the hub, then it was time to start building our, uh, new public faces, facing site, which I'm really excited to show you here. Um, this is, this is what you will see later this, uh, month or early next. As you can see aesthetically, I mentioned that earlier, we've improved by leaps and bounds. We have used modern-day web design best practices to build this website. Um, so you're greeted now with a welcome message because it will be a new site, but we anticipate use, uh, posting seasonal videos. So when it's, uh, open enrollment time, there will be a video that sort of complements what the initiatives are having, happening within the district. We can post, uh, videos that highlight our academies, um, our fine art schools, uh, our B-grade. We will change those out so that it's relevant current content. Um, you also notice, my second point earlier was that we were not using our website to, uh, really effectively sell ourselves and tell our story and communicate all the good things that are happening within the district. That's why news is now prominently in your face. You cannot miss the great things that are happening here because they're right there. Um, and we also, in our, within my department, we've made this shift to, previously, we would post all our news to social media and sometimes think about putting on the website. We just weren't using the website, that's going to be reversed. We're posting all our news to the district website first, and then a few minutes later, it'll all be pushed out to social media. But we want this to be the hub for the latest news of, about the school district. So it's a content-rich, content-heavy website because we have to promote ourselves, we set that as a goal for ourselves. Um, district events prominently displayed as well as featured video. This is one of my favorite little tools. I've been here one year and I know that I know about this much about school district. And I'm interested to say that most people in the public really know that about, about that much about us. So we created this neat interactive tool so that people can click through and see, learn about us, that we are one of the largest school districts in the country, one of the largest in the state, one of the lowest funded in the state. That our graduation rate is the highest it's been in a decade. Um, as far as promoting the district, we've been out scouring, uh, the community to have important people in Polk County tell us why they believe in Polk County public schools. And now when you visit our district website, you are met with that, that first thing. Um, these are all testimonials from leaders in our community who believe in what we do. Of course, our instant, uh, our, uh, social media feed is again prominently displayed. So, so we've met the aesthetic requirements that we set out, we've met the, um, marketing and the promotion, um, goals that we had for ourselves. So next came structure. And we really, um, you know, we did away with that old template. We, we were not bound by organizational charts. We did not say to ourselves, well, this must, this must go, this information must go on this page because it belongs to this department. We looked at this from a true outside perspective. And we, and again, we did, uh, we've, uh, used the feed, we've used input from feed, uh, from parents. We recently, earlier this month, month, we conducted user testing at the Jim Miles Center. We had over forty people come and take part in our user testing, parents, students, community members, employees, to tell us if we were on the right track. And we watched them try to act, uh, they, we gave them tasks to complete, and we watched the paths they were taking to make sure that we have indeed logically organized this information. So now parents are met with a mega menu that, um, prominently displays their most frequently, uh, the, the information they most frequently need, how to enroll their child, um, how to find information on past delays and, and school nutrition. Um, students, again, information that's really geared towards them. We were also, um, so we didn't pay attention to the, the aura chart so much, we paid attention to what made sense. Um, a good example of this is our preschool page, I'll show you this. Um, previously, ESE preschool information lived on an ESE page because that fell in that department. And everything else lived on a different page because it fell up within a different department. The general public, we believe, does not particularly care about that. They want to know what kind of preschool programs does the school district offer? So here, at a glance, you get a look at every single preschool pa- program we have to offer. Granted, when you click on ESE, you're going to end up over on the ESE site. But at a glance, you get the full range of preschool programs we have to offer. Um, another neat feature of what we did. Another neat feature of what we did, as we delved into the content, we, there, there's so much that people, when they refer to the school district, I don't know if they have a full understanding of what all that entails. So this is one of my favorite pages that we've created. It's the school options page, where again, at a quick glance and written layman's terms, everyday language, you see that our school district encompasses everything from preschool programs all the way down to our academies, our learning centers, virtual school, charter schools. And we explain what those things are so that people who are maybe new to the district or who are enrolling a child for the first time, they get a sense of what this district entails. Couple other features, you know, again, this is all about improving communication. It's about connecting our public with the information they need as quickly as possible. So we built, you'll see throughout the site, we've worked with staff. There's a lot of content writing has been done here. We worked with staff to identify their most frequently asked questions for their respective areas, and we provide the answers right there for our public. Not that we don't want the public to call us and ask questions. It's that we want to provide them as many, with as many answers to the questions that they might have right there in front of them. And should they have more questions, we, we've built in these modals that you'll see on every single page that will connect you directly with the employees who are responsible for the content you're viewing. So that if you have questions about bullying, which falls within student services, there's no need to go search for the directory and figure out where the right employees live and figure out. We're putting it right in your face. So those are some highlights. And I mentioned, early, the previous website, one thing I think I failed to mention was there was a lot of redundancy in that the parents' page included information about bullying. The students' page included information about bullying. What that did was create two pages we have to remember to maintain. We have, again, thrown away that philosophy. Now there's one bullying page, but you access it from multiple pathways. So we really created this intentional redundancy. So if I'm a parent and I'm concerned about bullying, I can get it, get to it here. I can get to it from the parents' homepage. If I'm a student worried about bullying, I also see it up here. It's directed at me. But they're all leading me to the same place. So maintaining the website will be easier because we have not created multiple pages that we don't really need because we're really just sharing the same information or rather than tailoring it to different audiences as we did in the past. We have one bullying page, but we've built in multiple places for you to get there. You'll see that throughout, for instance, bus delays. And again, we used our analytics from the previous website and the information we obtained from our user testing to, it's being a little slow, of course, right when I need it to work the most. But we built in, bus delays right here. It's right in your face. You can't miss that. If you happen to do, miss that, you'll find it under the parents' mega menu. It's also on the parents' homepage. So that hopefully you see it at some point as you're exploring the site. You will find what you need within just a couple clicks. We also help me too. This is one of my favorite features. These, based on our analytics, these are some of the most frequently visited pages on our current district site. So let's make them readily available so you can get there as quickly as possible. So that's our, our, our big project. We do anticipate, hey, we want to get past the beginning of the year busyness and not disrupt people's lives as much as possible. We're going to spend the next few weeks redirecting all the pages on the current website, redirecting them to the proper location on the new website so that people will get where they need to go. If they have pages bookmarked, that sort of thing, it will take them to the right place until they get used to navigating the new website. We also anticipate doing another, we're planning on doing another round of user testing just prior to the launch to make sure that, that we've addressed. And there were a few, there were about three recurring issues that came up in our first user round, testing round. And these guys, again, the geniuses at the end of the table, they were able to address those issues on the spot. So we were making instantaneous refinements based on the feedback we got, and we'll continue that process. But we believe we've built something that not only modernizes the web presence of the school district, but also, more importantly, improves the way we communicate with the public. Because we know, as Mrs. Byrd said at the outset, that that is a recurring frustration for our public, that it's hard to find information.
Questions? Mr. Townsend?
First, just a, a comment. It's really clean and pretty well-done.
Thank you. I agree.
And, and, I mean, the, this is an indication of the level of my critique of it. Is, is, is there any way to like, highlight the help me to in a different color so that that leaps out at you? Like, like when you, I think that would be a cool thing for, for. What about mo- mobile? And you may have said that, well, I was.
I did not, and that's a good point I should have mentioned. Yes, we have ensured that it is responsive on all types of, kinds of devices, from your phone to large screen monitors. That was actually part of something that we built into our user testing. We had people test it on different devices.
Will, will we app it? I'm not even sure, I mean, y'all, y'all would tell me more if that would be an appropriate thing to do or not, to like, to turn it into an app per se, or, or?
I think maybe later down the line, an app that would maybe take you to specific, like parents' app that maybe connects you directly to things like parent portal. Sort of a complement to the website rather than making the website in itself an app. That, we've talked about that, but that's a year or two goal.
And the, and the last thing, I want to help me too, you guys are going to track those things to see what traffic is and update them.
Absolutely, and we'll make, we will make refinements. For instance, we, you know, if we'd had this website when Parkland happened, Save Schools is right here. That probably would have been moved to the forefront because people wanted to know about our Save Schools initiatives. And it may have been something we even moved to the homepage. So we're able to manipulate those things very easily.
Like, like her, her, you know, base, that kind of thing?
Absolutely, yes. And we've talked about how we'll be able to very quickly post emergency banners to communicate that kind of information. And we all are, I need to mention two more things. The domain will change. Right now, it is polk-fl.net. We purchased, purchased polkschoolsfl.com. We wanted to get the word schools in there. Polk-fl.net could really be anything. It could be the Florida County Commission. We wanted schools. It will only, however, pertain to the website. This will not affect, it's a multi-year process for that to roll out to apps, things like Journey and Moodle. It also will not affect email addresses for the time being. That'll be a multi-year process. And we have used throughout the development, this is a WordPress, WordPress-supported website. WordPress has tools built in to ensure that we are ADA compliant. And before we launch, we'll do a final check to make sure that we've met, we are in full ADA compliance.
Mr. Townsend?
This looks awesome.
Thank you.
It's so, I've used the, this website since, I think it was changed when I was in like, the second grade. So I've used it as a student and now as a staff member, and it is so clean and easy to navigate. I know you had mentioned it hasn't been updated in at least 10 years. Is that, do we have enough staff to make sure it continually is being upgraded from now on?
Well, right. Well, one of the things we're doing in the past, pretty much everyone was in charge of their own content, and that's kind of where part of the problem lies because it was my responsibility, in addition to running a huge department, to also update the website content. And because we had so many editors in the mix, you ran into inconsistency with language, with grammar, with, I mean, if you really look at the text that's on the current website, there's one thing I wanted to point out. I just didn't want to take up the time. But there's, there's several pages where you'll actually see, please add this information to the blank link. Where people, so that means someone literally copied and pasted an email to the website. And that just portrays a, we really don't really care what we're putting out for public consumption. So we are, this will be centrally managed within the Public Relations Department. We will very slowly open up editing rights to the people who need them the most. So that'll help ensure that it stays maintained and up to the new standard we're setting for ourselves. It is a lot more work, I will be honest. So there will be times when, you know, other projects might have to take a backseat to ensure that this is kept up to date. But we believe this is extremely important and that this is our most powerful communications tool. So we will prioritize this in the future. We could always use more staff, though. Let's just be honest. We could always use another, another genius web analyst.
I just, as far as keeping it up day-to-day.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot of work.
They're both geniuses, but how, can they handle keeping it up?
It's going to be a lot of work. And, but we do have a couple other staff members who are learning WordPress as we go. I've learned so much about WordPress. So, you know, simple text edits, when we get those throughout, every single day, we're getting dozens of, I need this changed on my website. We can respond to those fairly quickly because we have enough people on staff, I think, who can respond to very simple text edits. But we also think we're going to, we're going to, we're planning on getting into rotation where we're constantly reviewing sections of the website and meeting back with staff. Is the ESOL content still up to date? We need to make sure. So we're going back out to that staff member, having him review it, make sure that we are still portraying the right information to our public. So it's been a lot of work, and we're really, really proud of it. And I'm really proud to share it with you. So thank you for your time.
Any other questions?
Just say, a contractor might be a good idea for, for that. I mean, I don't know, like, you know, just a thing to, to, to think, to think, to think, to think about. There are a lot of, a lot of writers and editors out, out there, so.
That's true. Thank you. Thank you. Bye. Okay.
Thank you, guys. Great work.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair, some close, my portion, I turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent. So we do have some information items. Any questions about the information items before we move on to the agenda review? Okay, as part of the gender, agenda review, there, I think there were some emergency items added.
Yes.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to speak to that?
There were two items added to the agenda. I'm trying to find it. I know one was the Early Learning Coalition, and another was a grant through multiple pathways. The grant was for our Florida Virtual, for our elementary component. Because of the K-12, we have not renewed that contract. So we made sure we had a con, had a contract with another vendor to give our elementary students the option for that. So I wanted to get that on now because we're starting school next month, and I didn't want the parents to have to wait until the end of August to make a selection for that one. So that one's on. Then, since we did that, I said, let's, we can go ahead and put the grant on for the Early Learning Coalition, and those are the two items that were added.
Okay, thank you. So as I look through the agenda, there were a few things that were grant-related, and, and it may be that we've always done it this way, but it kind of stood out to me. They have rather large dollar values. One of them was $35 million. There were two or three that were over a million dollars. And I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the perception that that might create among the general public when we're, when we're putting those on the consent agenda. So I did ask those to be added to the regular agenda. So when we, when we have items, I know there are grant items in many cases, and I know that they're often continuations. But if they're real high-dollar values, it would be my preference, unless the other board members disagree, that we, that we put those on the regular. Simply because of the, the significant dollar values involved.
Do, do we?
Yes, ma'am?
Probably the amount that you're.
Right. And you need a direction.
Well, I, I mean, anything over a million dollars certainly catches my attention. And, and if it's, and if it's something new, if it's a new contract, I mean, if, even if it's a grant, if it's a new grant, you know, my, you know, my threshold might be closer to half a million dollars if it's a new one. It's not, does that, does that make sense? My answer, okay. So if it's, if it's a continuation, I would say a million dollars. If it's, if it's a new grant, half a million dollars? So we have, we have some special recognitions. We have a couple sets of minutes. Any questions or comments about the minutes? We have some new administrators. On the consent agenda, any question about items C-9 through C-14? C-15 through C-26? C-27 through C-42? Business services contracts. We have, again, a number of donations, and we, as always, we're very grateful to our business partners, our community, for all the, all the wonderful donations and the support they're giving our schools. Any questions about any of the donations, cash or non-cash? All right, that takes us to item C-83. Purchase of Renaissance. It's a teaching app. Any questions about item C-83, 3 through C-87? Questions, C-88 through C-90? And C-91 through C-94? That's, those are items on the consent agenda. Okay, and the regular agenda, we added E-95 as an emergency item. Any questions about C-16 through C-19? Well, let me back up. These were on the orig, original agenda. Well, you can see them on here. Okay, so C-16 through C-19, this will be added to the regular agenda. And those were some items that, that had some rather large dollar values. Business service contracts, R-96 through C-36 on your screen. Question, comments? And then R-100 through R, yes, sir?
Y'all are probably going to hate, hate me for this. I'm sorry. I, I Station, a couple of things about this. I, what, what would happen if we had a work session about, or, sir, first, before we, I mean, like, what is the urgency of getting this approved?
About I Station?
And, and I, I ask that because I, I Station's a little bit controversial out in the education world. They're pretty aggressive as a, a marketing company. I, I, I've, I've heard some complaints about sort of, sort of red cape. There's a lot of incentive to use it, and I want to make sure those incentives are aligned to learning as opposed to use. You know, I, I would like to, to hear a little bit more about I Station. I, I had a, there was a specific person I was dealing with last year who, who, who had an ESE issue and was sort of told that I Station was the answer for it, or, or I ready, one, one of the I's. I think they're all under the same blanket, right? And there was a sense that some of, some of the teachers didn't, didn't have full level of, of, of training on it that they need to, to, to be able to use all the functionality. So if it, if it's possible, al- also, the sole, the sole source aspect of this makes me a little uneasy. So if, if there was some way to have a discussion of this prior to actually approve, approving it, if it's, I mean, it, what happens if we don't approve it tonight?
I'll, I'll let Dr. A. stall, but I can tell you if we don't, then that throws us behind with what we're going to instructional, because we have things that's tied to instructional that has been utilized. And a lot of training went in last year because it was new at certain levels. But I'm going to let Dr. A. go a little bit deeper into the I Station itself.
This is our second year with I Station. I know that, that last year, we worked real hard. Teachers did, principals did at the elementary level to implement this. I think that we've learned a lot through that implementation year. One of the things that we've talked about at both our Leadership Academy and the Principals, welcome back, was that ensuring that we understand how to differentiate the implementation of that. We've been very clear on that. But we're poised this year to not have the delay in implementation, especially with the one rostering system with focus being ready and rolling on that. I am somewhat familiar with concern that the parent had with it. But I do think it goes back to ensuring that the right tier of support is put into place. And I think our teachers have come a long way with the implementation. Anytime you implement a supplemental program, I think there will always be some concerns, is it the right one for the right students at the right time? And I think that's one of the things we're really trying to ensure of the implementation. This particular one is, was recommended and used by University of Central Florida. Worked with us on this, on the additional piece of it. And I think that, as Ms. Byrd said, we're ready to roll with it. It also has a Spanish version that we're working on with our elementary school to work on the implementation, again, because it's the second year. We've taken one step at a time. And it also has an instructional component, that, not just an online program. But last year, we, it was a struggle for some of our schools and teachers, but we worked through that, that tough phase. And this year should be able to really implement without any concerns. But if a parent has a concern, I'd be glad to sit down and talk to them about it and making sure that it's right for their child and if it's not, what we need to do to make it right.
So what is, so we, we started with last, last year, this is new modules for it? Like, this? So, what is, so we, we started with last, last year, this is new modules for it, like the Spanish? Or, or, or is this gonna be sort of an annual thing? What's the, what's, how's this relate to what we did last year?
You have two or three components when you're talking about instructional programs or instructional curriculum. You gotta be core curriculum, uh, which would be your textbook piece and, and example would be Go Math for Math. Within your core curriculum, then you look at supplemental programs. And before last year, we had a multitude of supplemental programs. We had too many supplemental programs. It was cognitive overload, not only for the principals, but for the teachers. So, what we really did was at the district level, invest in one supplemental program. Leverage our buying power instead of schools trying to piecemeal it. And so, this is intended to be what we would call a tier-two or tier-three intervention. There would be some core uses of this in a learning center in an elementary school. But by, uh, that's the purpose of it. It, it takes, uh, an online, uh, component of learning within the, the classroom. It has a student management system where the student can be working at his or her own pace, at his or her own level. So, it's, uh, it's a piece that we use both in reading and math. That's one of the duties of this particular program that has a math and reading program and the fact that it has a Spanish version that goes with it.
But is this essentially a renewal of what we did last year, or is it something new?
We actually got, uh, worked on the contract piece of it. So, we've been trying to make sure that, again, we, uh, are cognizant of that.
All right, I just, uh, I'll, I'll go for it. Just, just let's just stay aware of, I mean, I, I'm particularly, the, less, less so the question with the parent than the, the, there was some incentives built into it. That's, that seemed, that seemed to be built around use rather, like, and, and I don't, I, I would just want us to be careful with that.
Right. I can understand where it may recall some concern, but it's no different than we talked about accelerated reader and how we celebrate that. Accelerated reader is not to, intended to teach any student how to read. Accelerated reader is to celebrate independent reading. And with any program, the accelerated reader is a prime example. If done correctly, it's a great thing for students. If implemented, uh, without the fidelity measures that are put into place, then it, it is not a positive thing. So, your point is we'll take it for that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Aix.
Yes, sir.
So, any questions, comments about items R one oh one through R one oh three or E one oh four? So, we have, and, uh, Mr. Bridges, my question is, on these next items, I understand that we need to invite speakers before each individual item. Is it necessary to recense the regular board meeting or just-
No, sir. No, sir, these are agenda items on a board meeting. Uh, the way I would suggest that you proceed is when you get to the first one, uh, you take up that agenda item and say, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen tenanted budget. Are there any speakers? Take the, take the comments, then the board acts. Then you move on to the next one, ladies and gentlemen, public hearing for, for Academy North. Are there any speakers? Uh, just, just proceed like that. There are agenda items on your regular board.
Okay, they just require, we're just gonna open it up to public comments prior to each vote?
Yes, sir. Uh, when, when you have this many, I think that's the neatest way to do it. To ensure that, that people have the opportunity to speak to the particular item they're interested in.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And, and then also, Madam Superintendent, we have some items here. For example, the, uh, all the items related to the budget and mileage rates. Will we have someone come forward and, and maybe talk about that just a little bit before we? Okay, thank you. And same thing with, um, the code of conduct and the school board policy updates?
Mr. Butler, we'll have him come, the code of conduct.
Okay. Maybe have someone come forward and talk about that just a little bit before we open it up for public comment. Okay. Thank you so much. So, any other, any other comments, questions about the agenda? The next item is, has to do with Dr. Freo's contract. Dr. Freo, would you mind coming forward, please, just in case anyone has any comments or questions? We, we had, we had a contract in place with Dr. Freo for two retreats and evaluation of the superintendent. As it happened, those contracts didn't align well with our, with our, uh, board's budget. So, what, what we did was to kind of put everything, get everything aligned, was we asked Dr. Freo to write up another contract and this will line up then with the new budget year. Essentially the same thing that we agreed to before. That, if you're wondering why this coming before us, that's, that's the answer. And I would also like to mention in talking with Dr. Freo, I appreciate this so much. You know, one of the things that I've encountered over the years as it relates to strategic planning and finances, oftentimes we get, sit down at the table with folks, everybody knows how to do it until it comes time to do it. And then there's kind of a sense of nowhere to start. So, it's, uh, it, you know, it's something that our staff can do. And I, and I have every confidence, certainly in Mr. Hill's ability to do it. But I do think it requires some guidance and some training. And Dr. Freo has agreed to work with our staff to, to, uh, train them on that process so that they can take it over. And at some point in time, then we wouldn't, uh, he, he would be, uh, working himself out of a job here. But he, he understands that and appreciates willingness to do that. So, that's what this is about, just bring, letting you know why this is coming before us. And, uh, do we need, do we need to put this on the, on a, on a board agenda for a vote at some point in time, Mr. Bridges?
Uh, the, the, the value of the, of the contract is within superintendent's contract.
Okay, very good. So, are there any questions or comments for, uh, Dr. Freo? Yes, sir?
I just wanted to ask if it would be, and this is looking long-term, not immediate. But I noticed there were two time periods, September and March. The fact that, uh, come November twentieth, there will be at least two new board members, would it be advisable to schedule it then rather than prior to?
I think we had that conversation.
We had that discussion and I, we were depending with you, but I think the majority-
You're gonna know at least one of them on August the twenty-eighth.
Wanted, wanted to, uh, wanted to-
Prior to what?
Wanted to, um-
You're gonna know at least one, you're gonna know one of them on August the twenty-eighth.
Mrs. Fields has a four.
I thought he was asking what I was talking about.
I'm sorry.
I just said, I thought we had already had the discussion and the majority of the board consensus that we needed to go on with September, even though we knew that we were gonna have new board members in November.
Yeah, so we, and that's what we discussed. We, we agreed that, we agreed as a board that the existing board really is the, the appropriate body to have, to lead and be a part of these, these discussions. Certainly, we're gonna have some new board members and we will absolutely invite them to participate, especially in March. But, you know, frankly, we've all been there, it takes, it takes a long time to get up to speed. So, I think that was a discussion we had. Any, any other questions, comments? Okay. So, at this time, uh, we'll have board comments. Now, just a quick reminder with-
If I could comment-
Oh, yes, sir, absolutely.
This is the easiest presentation I've ever had.
Thank you.
Let's always go at the end.
When we're too tired to comment. Thank you, Dr. Freo. So, the next item is our board comments. We do have a special, uh, hearing at four-thirty. Mr. Bridges, is there any chance we can move that up or no?
Uh, we, it's been noticed for four-thirty. I would, I would suggest that that be the-
Okay. So, board comments?
Oh, I, um, I meant to bring this up last time. At the conference in June, um, it was mentioned during the Board of Directors meeting that the FSBA is forming a committee to look at health insurance. And I don't know if they contacted you or not, they were, but I didn't, and I didn't know. They mentioned that they were gonna make contact with chairman. But if they didn't, I really think it would be important for a board member to be on that committee because, um, it's a statewide issue and health insurance costs are going up. And they're, they, it's another way to see what other districts are doing. And to talk about possible solutions or possible plans of action on how to handle it. Because, um, the FSBA feels like it's going to be a crisis for all school districts. So, I wanted to mention it about maybe getting somebody on that committee.
They haven't reached out to me, um, but certainly we would, we would want to have someone on there, I think.
That's all I was just gonna mention it since you weren't able to come. We might wanna contact, somebody contact FSBA and, and find out when and where they're meeting.
Could you, would you mind sending me an email?
I will.
And remind me that.
I'll be glad to do that.
Mr. Jackson?
Couple, couple of things real quick. They're reasonably significant, I think I can move through them fast. First, I want to say, uh, this is actually a very encouraging meeting today. I, I see a lot of organizational thought, uh, with this, this, uh, ABIG plan and the, uh, the, uh, cap, 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 capital plan and the website, I, I, it's good, good to see, so, thanks. Secondly, uh, do, do we have a status on the Airmark contract? I think it was due to be renewed. Can we, what's, what's our status on that?
I could probably feel that. The Airmark contract rolled over and, and was removed, uh, renewed automatically as of, of the end of June. Uh, Airmark has offered to, to provide some additional services at no additional cost. And I believe Mrs. Usher was going to bring a, a memorandum to the, to the board. Uh, in order for that to be binding, it has to be accepted by the board. But the contract, the contract was renewed automatically as of, as of July one. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I guess.
I think, Mr. Bridges, you also might want to highlight, we were, when the concerns were broad, I think we were outside the-
Yeah, it had, it had already, uh, the, the notice period had already run at, at that time. So, we, we have, we have a contract of, my understanding is that they offered some, some additional, um, services at no additional cost, but they need to be accepted by the board and it can be binding.
Yeah, I, I, it was my understanding that it doesn't really matter if we renew or not renew once we miss the time. It's, it's, we're gonna pay the same penalty one way or another if we, so, um, I guess perhaps if we get a chance, we can talk about this, a little bit of, when, when that, when that memo comes up. Can try to talk, talk about some of the, the concerns as well from, from staff. And, and I think this, in some way, this may bear on our, our, our hearing today, but as well. So, anyway, that's, 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 that's what I wanted to do. Secondly, um, I wanted to ask about, as, as I read our, you know, the House State, State law reads, there's nothing to stop us from taking a vote as a board opposing amendment eight. If we do it during a regularly scheduled meeting, like, like we can't schedule the meeting for the purpose of doing that. But if we decided to do that as a board, we could, like, uh, is, is my understanding of that correct? What's your, what's your take on, on that?
Yeah, I, I can't, can't think of any reason why you could not take your position on, on that. I think from time to time, the board has taken, has taken positions on, on statutes and, and I can't think of a reason why you couldn't do the same thing.
Is the distinction between that and the sales, sales tax, that there's no money inherently involved in the, in the, in the?
Well, the sales tax, you're, you're not, you're not taking a, a vote. The, the board doesn't approve or deny that, I think. Uh, yeah, that is a, a different animal. Here, you've got a statewide proposition that, that you, uh, that you object to. The school board also entered into litigation against, against the state on a statute that it believes is unconstitutional. I think you can, you can certainly take a position. You, you're not voting to approve or, or deny that proposition. You are saying, uh, we, we are, we are showing solidarity in our position against it. And I, I think a board, a school board can, uh, can express its, its support of something like that. I'd be happy to look at it and-
Yeah, I was, I was just basing it off your sales, sales, sales tax, but I, I was sort of applying-
Sales tax is a little different. I think what we're talking about with the sales tax is not using the taxpayer's dollars to, to campaign for it. Board members can certainly support it, um, individually. But I, I think here, uh, where you're talking about it, a statewide initiative, the board has, has a position. By all means, by all means state it. I think individual board members certainly have that, that right. But I can't think of a reason why the board could not adopt a resolution that said, uh, it, I'd do it in the form of resolution and say, uh, that, uh, that we, we find this to be odious, we find it to be rebelling, we find it to be a, in contravention of, of, of what is, what is best for, for students in, in the, in the state of Florida. However you would like to, uh, put that in, probably in, in diplomatic terms. But I, I can't think of a reason why a school board could not adopt a resolution like this.
So, you guys, you guys up for that?
How do we feel about that? The consensus on a resolution opposing amendment eight? Mr. Harris, do you, have you, are you opposed to it? Mrs. Fields?
I'd be happy to draft something and, and I, I certainly would not be opposed to circulating it amongst my colleagues in some other districts and asking, uh, you know, whether there was interest beyond vote count.
Sure. Well, we, it appears we have consensus.
Awesome.
I'll be happy to take a whack at that.
Uh, and last, the last thing. I, I recently, there were at least one child and maybe a number, a number of them who enrolled in our, one of our magnet, magnet schools and then was unenrolled some months later because of, of the inability of that magnet school to meet their, their ESC need. I, I'm wondering if it's important for us, you know, and this kind of goes to the Lake Wales issue as well, taking all kids. If there needs to be some sort of disclosure on magnet school applications of what the services are that are available, um, you know, as a policy. I don't want, I mean, I think it's really hard for a kid to get enrolled in March and think they're going to a school and then learn in July, no, sorry, we can't take, thank you. I think that's tough. And I think, my sense is it happened to a number of people, uh, but I, I know certainly one. So, I would recommend that as a policy, that we disclose what exactly each school is willing to do from an ESC point of, point of, point of view and what it can't do. That's, so that's, that's, and that's my, uh, mine.
Okay, any, any other board comments? I, I have a question, Madam Superintendent. As you know, recently I was, um, approached by the press about our radon testing. Could you address that? Do we have a plan in place and are we, are we doing radon?
We do, Miss Usher is not in here. She's been working with Gerald Peavy, um, regarding that. So, I can ask her to write an update to the board if you all like me to have that provided for you, to you.
I, I would please because it appears it's something that the press is interested in. Certainly, I'd want, I would want to, uh, respond appropriately to that.
I will, I will have her do that.
Any other board comments? So, if there are none, this work session meeting is adjourned.